We're gonna stand for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance, thank you.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for being here this morning for our workshop. I probably should have let Sandy chair the meeting. I don't have much of a voice from screaming into the ball field for the weekend, so. We are at our public event. Do we have any public events? Have you had a chance to look around? No? Alright. Okay. So we are on our internal audit plan. Mr. Monk, good morning.
Good morning. This is the first. I'm first. Good morning. What I have to present today is the internal audit plan for 2018, 2019. And just a little background to explain how I got to here, I guess. It was a little work involved. One of the things I did about two months ago is I went out and visited all the, not all. I went out and visited a number of the school district websites looking for internal audit departments. I knew the larger districts had them, so it was no problem. So I passed that out. It's a multi-page form, about five pages. And it starts with Miami-Dade. And I also gave you a little idea of their audit shop size, so if it was available. Some of them have it, some of them don't have it on their websites. And then I kinda went in and looked at what they were currently doing as far as an internal audit plan. And if they didn't have an internal audit plan, I went back and looked at what reports they did the prior year. So I kinda gave you an idea of what audits they were doing. So, and what I did with the yellow highlights, I kinda highlighted what I've done already, like internal fund audits, the FTE audit, P-card audits, so etcetera. So, you know, kinda, everything's not obviously highlighted on here because I haven't done an audit in every area that they may have. And some of them may be like Miami, as we all know, Orange County, Miami-Dade, very large school district, so one little area could be hundreds of millions of dollars where here it's not that big of an issue or not that big of a money area. So, but I highlighted all that. I just gave that for your information. It's not anything. I used it and I used it in the workshop with the Audit Committee. And that's the next thing I was gonna say is in April, what I did was part of the Audit Committee's agenda in the April meeting was to have a workshop on the internal audit plan. I gave them this information and I also gave them what I thought the internal audit department here at Lake County Schools should do during the year, but it wasn't in stone. I said, you know, "This is what I think, but I'd like to bring it up for discussion with the Audit Committee and get their insights and input as well." So, we had, we talked about, we did about thirty, forty minutes talking about what we've done in the past, what we are currently doing this year. So, with what we're currently doing this year, I always update the Audit Committee, usually about twice a year. And I passed out another form that kinda looks like the one that's up on the board, but I highlighted in pink the fact that it is this year, not what I'm proposing to do next year. So, and what I did also is under the, under here, you can see that's budgeted. That's what I expect to put hours in. And what I did on the 2017, 2018 update is give you a more realistic, whatever I spent my time during this past fiscal year, and I know we only got a couple more weeks left and this year will be done. So, that kinda gives you an idea. So, things like if you scroll all the way down, special projects. There were no special projects here, projects this year. However, in the past, we've done them. And, you know, I've got a list here of seven or eight special projects I've done over the past, and this is my fifth year, so over the past five years. And also, I've sat in on like four committees. So, that's where some of that time goes when those things come up. And I never know. I mean, I don't know right now if there's gonna be a committee next year that somebody would like me to sit on, or that there's gonna be an audit, another Booster Club audit or not at somewhere that, you know, something comes up and somebody says, "You know, we really need Tom to go look at that," and you all agree, then that would be a special project for me to do. But if I don't get something, I'm just not twiddling my thumbs. I'm obviously working on, you know, a project. And just to let you know, another thing is like time and attendance. I never did a time and attendance audit here at Lake County Schools. So, my projection, if you, well, it's not here, but my old projection of where I was projecting to spend my resource has almost doubled. I've spent tremendous amount of time trying to learn True Time and Skyward, how it's working. Spent an immense amount of time going down different rabbit holes, you know, so to speak, to look at things, you know, and ask, you know, revisit people. I think some people are probably getting a little annoyed when they look up and I'm standing at their door again, you know, to say, you know, "I got all that, but I'm still not 100% sure what you're talking about." So, I call dummying that down to where Tom can understand it. But I feel if they get it dumb enough to where I can understand, I'm gonna be very helpful to you because then I can present it back to you. So, there's a lot of technical stuff in what's going on with Skyward and True Time that's gonna be very interesting when that audit comes to a conclusion and I finish my report. So, that's how I got to here, if that makes sense. Does any questions how I got to here? Now, I didn't do a risk assessment. I did one when I first came on board. I kinda updated it a little bit a year or so ago. As we all know, the state issued a bill, I think it was 1279. And they, in that bill, they said to do a risk assessment every five years. So, in reality, next year, I'm gonna do a risk assessment. Already in my mind, I'm gonna change it. I know I can present the risk assessment better for the school district and, you know, all shareholders to better understand where the risks are in the district and how they break down. So, I wanna try to group it for them to understand where the risks might lie, such as training, you know, lack of training, so to speak. So, that's what I'm hoping to do with this next risk assessment that I present next year with the audit. I'll do a full one next year. Helpful?
It's helpful, but I have one question because exactly what I wrote down. I asked you about your risk assessment. And you did it, I don't know, a year and a half ago or something, you updated it?
No, I did it when I first came on board.
No, no, I know you did it when you first came on board.
And then I updated about, yeah, about a year and a half ago, about two years.
But with some change in legislation and giving you some additional powers, I think it would be prudent for us to do another one.
Yeah, and another thing is-
Not wait five years, is my point. Like, I do one now.
Well, another thing is, is what we're doing in the district, I know there's some reorganization, tweaking to that reorganization going on. It's, you know, it's beneficial to get that done, so to speak, and then to go out and finish that, and then to go out and do a risk assessment. So, because things are changing. Things are moving around a little bit. Is that fair to say? A little now, not much. You're tweaking. So, I think there was more moving when the new superintendent came on board than there is now. But I hate to do a risk assessment, present it, and then someone look at it and say, "Well, it's not, you know, that area's gonna be different," you know what I'm saying, "in a few weeks or a few months."
Is that the case?
I was gonna say, is that a conversation that you guys can have about, this is where we are and this is pretty much the changes, and then we can do this risk assessment to come back to see if there are some areas now within your purview that we could add?
Yeah.
I mean, it just seems like to me that as we're moving forward and you're asking us to approve your plan, that, again, with the change in the legislation, that it would make sense for me that you would address areas that you before were not able, but that you had determined a risk assessment. Because I remember we had some discussion, particularly about processes, that were taken away from you being able to look at, right?
And I can do that. A risk assessment will take a while to do, to do it correctly. I mean, like-
Well, are there areas that you would think we should address in next year? Because some-
That's why I do it.
No, no, no. I get these, but some of these seem like an awful lot of time that you could maybe put in another one or two is kinda where I was, when I was looking at it.
So, more cut some in half, so to speak, and do other areas.
I just would think that you would evaluate it based on the legislative change, that's all. And maybe you're comfortable with this.
Yeah, I'm comfortable. It comes more on past. I mean, I probably wouldn't be as comfortable when I, my first year, but now that I've been here for five years, when I do audits, I know, and I make the presentations, I know it's gonna take time for those areas to implement the recommendations. I mean, I'll go back to the maintenance audit that I did when I first, the big one that I first did. And there's things that I recommended in that that I'm sure are still in the works around school dude and how they take care of school dude on a daily basis, running exception reports and things like that. And, you know, I just have a feeling, you know, those all haven't been implemented particularly at this point.
And then I expect that when you did this benchmarking of auditors and staff, that you didn't just do it to hand out. So, do you have an opinion that you need help?
I have an opinion, but I'm not sure I even wanna say it out loud. You know, my opinion when I look at this is, I mean, holy cows, you got 31 auditors and you only do seven audits? Give me a break. I mean, I hate to say it for Miami-Dade, but come on. Thirty-one auditors running around and you got seven audits completed? You know, I do six for you guys.
So, no help, just wanna race?
I don't know if that, Miami might call me up and tell me that's a poor comment, but I don't, you know, even Orange County, six auditors and twelve, fifteen audits, but I know some of those are, I personally know them. I know some of those are outsourced audits. So, I know that's not true. Six auditors, there should be twenty, thirty-some audit reports. I don't know. That would be my rule of thumb. I mean, you know, I would think an auditor could do a couple audits a year, just one single audit.
The crazy thing is, a couple of years ago, I had brought up the idea of having a second auditor, realizing how much value you had brought to this organization and how much we've uncovered in terms of cost savings and efficiencies. Although, when you look at the benchmarking and you see these other staff sizes, and I guess probably the most comparable in terms of per pupil funding or something like that might be Marion County, right? And they've got one auditor and two assistants. I guess that might beg the question of, well, I don't know, if a second person would be even fit in that office of yours, but if they move a chair out. You know, if there should be some assistant at least. I mean, I look at these audits and I think I had this conversation with one of our constituents over the weekend. Some of these don't really have the glitz and glamour or that they seem like some of the audits very well could just be done by almost a staff member, if you will, with maybe some supervision.
Sure.
You know, and give you a chance to dive into some of the more challenging or thought-provoking areas.
Like time and attendance?
Maybe.
Time and attendance?
You know, for instance, all the time, we see those physical inventory reports come before us where, you know, schools were audited and they, all their fixed assets over a thousand dollars are accounted for and so on and so forth. I wonder if there are some of these sorts of things that might be able to piggyback onto that process?
Yeah, normally in an audit shop of like thirty-one, I mean, you would obviously put the newer staff auditors on that, those tasks. So, yes.
So, I guess the big question is, is this a waste of resources to have you be looking at this stuff that maybe somebody with lesser experience might be able to tackle and allow you to jump into something more, more deep?
And we could put more audits on here. I mean, that's, that's a decision.
Right.
No, I'm looking for you to advocate that. Don't we just say you're not? That if you think that you with an assistant or two would be more effective, because we've seen the return. So, that part of my question.
I would advocate that. I mean, yeah, I mean, I know, knowledge and experience, I know exactly what you're saying. A less, you know, a staff plus to build some bench strength. I mean, I mean, you all know I'm gonna retire in five years, so I would be sixty-seven.
I didn't know that.
Sixty-six and a half.
Okay, that was good information.
Roughly, what is it? It's six years from today, you know, I'll have a couple weeks left. But who's counting?
So, could I ask this? You have an Audit Committee meeting this Wednesday, correct?
No. I had it in April.
There's one in June sometime.
This is, we're in June.
Well, it's the second.
We have not scheduled it. We're trying to get one together. We're trying to get a majority of them together because we're looking at the hiring a new CPA firm. So, we've got the RFPs out. They're, they are the committee for the, they are the selection committee for that, and that's why we're trying to get them together. So, that would be the next meeting. My next meeting that I would wanna get with them is obviously after the time and attendance audit is done. And I would guess that would be early August right now. That would be my projection for when I need to get them together. But they need to get together for the CPA selection.
Is that this Wednesday? Because my appointee has a meeting at two o'clock with you, I think.
I know nothing about that yet, so I'm sorry. I didn't get an email on that. Did you, Sandy? Sandy's your liaison, so I did not see anything on that yet.
Okay. I've got a meeting with Kurt at ten, because he said he had to be at the district at-
You're talking about tomorrow, though?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, he said.
Yeah, I don't have anything scheduled.
Yeah, I don't have anything.
He's just coming by the district. I assumed it was Audit Committee.
No.
It would be interesting for you to have a roundtable about this and what you would see.
With the Audit Committee?
With the Audit Committee and then come back with some-
Sure.
Including the risk assessment piece that was put in.
Yeah. And what I can do with them is I can kinda put my thoughts on paper and show them what I'd like to do for the updating. Because I think the last risk assessment kinda went over everyone's head. They didn't, you know, I graded risks and that and everyone didn't understand it. So, I wanna try to bring that forward is why, why is this, this level of risk, if that makes sense? And that kinda puts it up front and you can either disagree with that, or you agree or disagree with. I mean, there'll be a lot of that over risk anyways, so.
And I'd like some consideration to the succession, since we've now just heard you're gonna be retiring.
It's not soon. Any six years is always down the road.
No, what you say, it is locked here.
Yeah, it wasn't six weeks or six months, it's six years.
So, the time and attendance audit is the True Time program, right?
It's the Skyward True Time Module, yes. That's what I'm looking at in auditing right now. And who's on it, who's not on it, all the things. So, okay. So, after the Audit Committee meeting and President there, there was, basically, there was no feedback. So, what I have on here is what I'm bringing to you for agreement or obviously discussion as far as the areas I will be auditing. I do physical inventories, as we just discussed. I've already did food services. That was, I have to do that before the food service managers leave for the summer break. So, I've done that. Internal accounts, that's actually ongoing. As soon as I'm done at the workshop, I'll be heading down to East Ridge to work on an internal accounts audit for closing East Ridge's books, internal fund books. So, and I have to issue a report. I think if you remember, a few years ago, we weren't issuing a closing internal funds report for the year. And the CFO at the time, you know, came in and said, "Hey, you know, that was the state auditor said, 'We gotta issue this.'" So, that brought me back in. I wasn't doing internal funds audit, my review of it. So, that brought me back in. And last year, I did a desk review of it. I did fifteen schools, the Audit, and I told the Audit Committee and the Audit Committee said, "You didn't go out to the schools. It's very important that you presence be out at the school." So, now I'm going back out at schools. So, I'm gonna kinda mix that up. I'll do a few in the office and I'll do, you know, eight out in the field or ten out in the field, as many as I can get to as it fits in my schedule. So, if that makes sense. Then, you know, I tried to look at things I haven't done because I'd like to get into areas. I know I keep kinda maintenance, transportation, so I'm trying to look for other areas I can win, let those areas continue to, hopefully, continue to work through some of my audit findings and recommendations. So, that's where I come up with, you know, and you'll see that, you know, some other school districts are doing these as well in here. You know, security, they call it safety and security. I just call it security, school security procedures audit. And then, actually, the Karen Briggs talked to me about, you know, looking at what we're charging or what, yeah, what we're charging the charter schools versus the amount of resources and time behind that that we're giving. We may not be able to fix any, some of it, but there are pieces and parts of that that I think we can address. And some of that maybe came, if you remember, from the maintenance and transportation audit. Because when I was looking at work orders, I was looking at, you know, "That's all we're charging?" You know what I'm saying? It just, it looked extremely low. So, if we're doing, if we're taking that and we're doing it to the charter schools, we'd obviously have, could find some areas there where we could make improvements for the school district. I've never done, I never looked at, and as you see some of the other school districts, I've been doing it, looking at the inventory of our property out at schools. So, I never have gone behind property management to see if they're doing a good and efficient job of taking all the inventories at our school districts. Don't know if that's a yes or a no. I just, you know, because other school districts are obviously, on their agenda, I thought, "Oh, that's an area I've never done, so maybe I should do it now." And then we, I think, we will have the Cypress Creek construction project. I'm looking at you gentlemen and ladies, just to make sure if we're gonna move forward with that construction.
Now that it's on the audit plan, we gotta build it. So, that's fantastic. Thank you for putting that on there.
That was only because I thought you were. So, obviously, if that doesn't happen, I need to find a replacement audit, but I know, but I know we need it, so. And I know we're gonna have, as we go down the road, we're gonna have a lot of construction projects going up. And one of the things that Orange County does is every construction project, two million or more, gets audited. Just, they're a rather large school district, so that's gotta be a ton of audits every year for them.
So, speaking of construction, it might be maybe worthy of us to review the audit you had done on Eustace Heights to see if there are any sort of takeaways from that that we should be looking for going into the Cypress Ridge projects.
Yeah, you know, and that was one of the committees I sat on after that. I mean, there was a lot of things around the contract that I had recommendations on. So, I sat on that committee and we were giving a lot of input into update, the update of the contract, the GMP contract. So, I don't know, I thought I heard you guys say, "Is this a GMP job?"
Yeah.
It is? Okay. It wasn't a cost plus or something like that? Okay. So, hopefully, they took some of that advice and we moved it forward to, I haven't read the contract for this. I probably should, but I've been kinda busy.
You 100% should.
Yes.
And I also would see an expectation, because I think you did more than forensic with Eustace Heights. Are you from the very beginning? On Eustace Heights, were you auditing through the entire construction phase?
Yeah, I did. I did like three different points. After was about 25%, 50%, and then right before, right before we issue that, get that final payout.
That's right.
And that's how, I don't think I need to do the front end. I'm trying to do this one about 50%.
The front end would be looking at the contract.
Yeah, I wanna do, yeah, I just need to read the contract upfront.
But technically, if we had that conversation we were speaking about with the Audit Committee and the risk assessment tool, some of these things could change. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So, at this point, when do you think you would have, I mean, you said a risk?
If a risk, if I did a risk assessment, it'd probably take three months at least to get it up and going and, because a good risk assessment is actually going out to each of the areas, sitting down with them to get the feedback for what, where they feel the risks are. You know, are you doing this? Are you doing that? And then getting that feedback.
And that would give you your charge for the next three months while you develop that to then bring this back to us with that? Because I know you bring this to us and you have direction for the next year and what you're gonna do and which audits you're gonna complete. So, could we task you with doing your risk assessment? So, could we task you with doing your risk assessment and then?
You could, but until I get the time and attendance, then I, I probably wouldn't wanna tackle the risk assessment. So, I mean, you're looking at, you know, July, August start on this and.
So, well, my one question that I had was the, the timing of the school's security procedures audit. Like, are we doing, you know, some measure of auditing right now? Is Reggie, is John here? Is Reggie doing some measure of auditing, you know, so that we already know we have X number of cameras in the X school? So, does it make sense to do, for him to do an audit in August? Is it timely, early, or too late?
I, I would say it's too early.
Could we do the assessment now, yes?
Yeah, we're, we're in the midst of campus risk assessments and all of that. It has to be done by statute. So, that's work that's already being done. We, we did talk about that, and I think that as we move forward with that, that would be, to Mr. Mathias's point about legislation, that's where, of course, the majority of the new legislation is hitting. And, and most of it is still in implementation or planning mode at this point. So, I don't, I don't know that we're ready for him to do an audit on that at this time. So, I would say that it's probably one that could be pushed back, knowing that we're gonna be heavily assessing it as we implement and monitor along the way.
Seems like it's a natural pushback if he does his risk assessment.
Because then, then I'd be doing a risk assessment.
Right, that would push, that would push that back.
Thoughts?
Yes. I would recommend we move that. He and I talked about that.
Yeah, we talked about it. I'm fine, I'm fine. I'm, I'm, I'm not married to any of these at this point, so. I, I'm just trying to, to do what I was charged to do is add value. So, that's all I'm trying to do. If value can be added somewhere else, I'm, I'm happy to, you know.
I, I don't think there's any question up here about the value you've added by any means, but now with everything that's changing, if we could go to the risk ass, finish your, finish the one that we were talking about earlier.
And then do a risk assessment?
The time, the time one, and then do your risk assessment and let's see that, bring that back. Board members, do you guys have anything else for Mr. Mark? Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Six years.
You're counting two now?
Ms. Summerlin? We are ready for you. Do you need some, do you need some help?
Oh, my goodness. Are those for us?
No, ma'am.
You have two thousand pages.
Seriously. No, I mean, this is just in case. This is in case. I thought about it.
Good morning, board members. We are here to give you a, um, update on our Innovation Montessori Part-Side Charter application. We did, oh, I'm sorry, Julie Summerlin here with me, who is our supervisor for Choice Charter Community Ed. And Chris Landry, who is our director for Student Services, which the Choice office works under. And I have prepared a timeline for you because I wanted to walk through what has occurred thus far. So, with regard to our, um, application for this particular charter, on February first, that was the application due date. And so, the applicant then submitted, um, the application at that time. There were some grammatical issues, the font size, things of that nature, which are non-substantial. And we actually allowed the applicant and was given, um, time for the corrections, and that information was forwarded back to the applicant. On February twenty-eighth, the applicant met with our board capacity interview process. And the members present there were listed for you, Mr. Carr, Ms. Briggs, Dr. Wheeler, as well as Julie Summerlin. And at that time, they were met to clarify some of the questions regarding the application and also inform them of the charter view, charter review committee process. We had the charter review committee process on March sixth. And a team of multiple district experts came together representing multiple departments to review the application. And at that time, there was a consensus that the committee reached with regard to several pieces, which I will share with you as we move forward to go ahead and deny this particular application. A vote is cast, and based on that vote, that was the recommendation. Ms. Summerlin sent a notification letter, April second, and outlined the concerns that were identified by the committee. And then, on April twenty-seventh, a notification of a board meeting was also sent to the applicant so that they would be aware that there will be a board meeting on May fourteenth. The applicant then, applicant then responded to, um, those concerns with an email to the district as well as the board on May ninth with another forty-seven page response based on the initial, um, letter that was generated on April second. And then, you remember, we had a board meeting, which was May fourteenth, where the district, with Ms. Summerlin being the representative, addressed the board with review of this particular applicant's response and gave our applicant an opportunity also to address the board. At that time, we moved to come to a board workshop to hear more. And in the interim, on May twenty-fifth, we, we reconvened the district charter review committee. And at that time, looked at the additional, um, information that had been submitted on top of all of these things that you see here in terms of the initial application. And at that time, based on what the charter applicant addressed, the committee voted to approve, but with reservation. And so, I will, um, explain to you what reservation means as well moving forward. So, here we are today, June fourth, at our board workshop. And we're going to update you on the committee findings, as well as allow the applicant an opportunity to address the board with the final vote going to you on June eleventh for approval or denial based on today and moving forward. So, I hope that's a recap and, um, will help us as we move forward with what has and hasn't happened with regard to the process. So, our next slide shows the committee members. And these were the committee members that were present when the initial applicant, application was reviewed, um, as well as those that, um, when it was reconvened. We have some non-voting members that were present but not of, uh, part of the voting party. But you can see that each of our, um, departments that are tied to any areas within this application were present. The ratings, and I wanted to provide you with an update on the ratings so that you would understand the difference between each of the ratings that can be provided. So, a charter can either, or an application can either meet the standards, partially meet the standards, or not meet the standards at all. With a partially meets, which this applicant still has several areas that are impartial meet, the issue here is that the response lacks some meaningful detail that we are still looking for, and we would like to have some additional information provided. In the initial application, there were several areas that were partially met, and, um, those areas was, errors were provided and addressed to the applicant. But there was also an area that was, um, does not meet. And here, that means it lacks meaningful detail, demonstrates lack of preparation, or otherwise raises substantial concerns about the applicant's understanding of the issue, concept, ability to meet the requirement in practice. And so, when we're looking at particular applicants, we want to make sure that our applicants meet the standards and that we are able to, um, move those things forward. So, this charter was given an opportunity, um, to review those pieces, and we did reconvene. In the initial application, this shows out of the areas that were reviewed, the areas that met standards, the areas that partially met standards, and then the area that did not meet standards. The startup plan was the area that did not meet the standard, which includes much of the information with how you will get the charter up and running off the ground, budget, finance. And, um, some of those, um, personnel are here that can address those if you have additional questions moving forward. Areas that were partially met, we have curriculum, some of our assessment evaluation, our ESE students, facilities, school safety, and particularly the budget. And so, there were, um, areas there in that initial application that gave us pause. Some of the examples, which Ms. Summerlin did address at her, um, board workshop, um, meeting, was that there was some lack of understanding of the MTSS process and looking at how we will remediate and support students that may fall behind in a Montessori-type curriculum. Also, we had some, um, reference to old standards as opposed to our new Florida standards. We had some critical information revolving around, um, student growth in terms of multiple grade students. Again, kinda tracing back to the MTSS and meeting grade-level expectations, lack of specific corrective actions to meet student achievement gaps. And then also concerns with the ESE progression, and the school did not name, um, any personnel that would be supporting ESE students. It seemed as though with reading the application, that they were depending on the district to provide that support. Also, with regard to that initial application, we had lack of details with ESE in general. So, the evaluation tool, resource and support for students who were left behind, family access, role of the sponsor in supporting the needs of these students, and, um, how they were defining a least restrictive environment. Also, FERPA was an area that came up with regard to ensuring that parents' rights were not violated and student data is kept safe. We also had a lack of facility plans, some missing data with regard to security plan, and specifics for the plan that would, um, provide security and safety for all students and staff. We wanted to pull those out for you today so that you would be able to see the initial application and, um, why we brought the recommendation for denial initially. Attachment U is an attachment that is required, which was not submitted, and therefore, that critical information was missing at the time the charter board first convened. There was a lack of information regarding the school's contribution to the startup costs. So, there was significant, um, reference to fundraising and things of that nature, but we didn't see, um, significant startup costs being presented. Funding source for the entire facility plan as well, lack of commitment to any plan which does not allow for the assessment of adequate planning and resources. We saw some incorrect data provided in the application budget. There were some pages that maybe referenced a chart with information that did not match the narrative for information, that then did not match maybe what was in the budget. There was a lack of detailed information in that budget regarding, regarding the school's sound plan, is it sound? And again, we have those experts that can speak more thoroughly with regard to that. Technology provisions in the event of revenues are not materialized, and the startup plan lacked critical information that did not allow for assessment of the adequacy of the plan. So, the plan came back with, uh, or the chart, the applicant came back at the time of the board meeting with the forty-seven page response. And again, some additional information was submitted after that. We did go ahead and bring the committee back together to review those, um, submissions. And so, based on the additional, additional application materials that were submitted, we had sections that met now. So, you'll see the ESE and the curriculum plan was moved over into meets with the additional information provided. And our startup plan was moved from not, did not meet standards into the partially met. But we still had several areas that are critical areas that we had paused for with regard to the partially met status. New information. So, based on the reconvening, where we still have, um, additional, um, areas that we find to be partially met and have concern or reservation about is the revenue shortfall. So, there were still revenue shortfalls that were identified, um, as well as some pieces within the facility budget in terms of starting up the organization and the facility, um, um, budget pieces that were outlined. The emergency management, meaning multiple hazards and standards for training, were not present. FERPA, again, with appearance rights and protection of student data was not addressed. There was pretty much a statement in there that said, we will follow FERPA, but we didn't have information on how will you put procedures in place to make sure that those rules and student data are supported. So, in moving forward, what is required by us for the statute? We, um, enter some particular information in here coming straight from the statute language so that you have an idea of, um, why we had paused with the initial application and why we still find many aspects of it to be, um, partially met. And demonstrating that a school will use guiding principles, providing a curriculum plan, objectives for improving student learning. All of these things are, uh, based on our review process to make sure that we meet the Florida standard for, um, reviewing our charter school applications, describing the reading curriculum and differentiation strategies to make sure that they're scientifically based in reading. An annual financial plan that allows you to operate the school for up to five years. And so, we felt like these areas that were here, um, fully aligned with what is expected, and that's the rationale for why partially met was given and not met in some of those areas, as well as the rubric that we use tied to those areas. Disclosing the applicant, additional information requiring for the addendums that should have been attached specifically attached to U and virtual. So, in terms of that requirement, we did provide the charter, um, seven days for some of the things that were just technical and grammatical typographical opportunities to go ahead and make those, um, updates. That was prior to them coming to meet with the, um, charter board, the charter board coming to meet with the district. And then also had a district review where we still saw that some of those things were present, as well as some significant, um, errors. Also, the full accounting of assets and projection of expected sources of income, as well as those things associated with operation and startup costs, we still saw, um, pause for those areas being partially met. Here as well, we, in terms of things being non-compliant, there was different areas that, again, within a chart, within a graph, within a narrative, that didn't seem to quantify together or, um, aggregate together with regard to the whole of the, um, application. So, our overall recommendation in looking at where the committee landed, we did approve, um, none of the areas where it does not meet anymore, but that was with, with reservation. Reservation being, because there are still areas of concern that we still need additional information and would need to be addressed. However, the consideration is that all of these things were submitted after a timeline. We had an initial timeline, we met that, um, particular timeline. And then again, a good faith effort to go back and reconvene a committee together to look at the additional, um, pieces that were submitted and also, um, give a recommendation. But with regard to that, our, um, any charters that have been, um, considered have met the timeline. This would be one that we are considering after a timeline, which we would be setting precedence on. So, we wanted to also give a good faith effort and show that some things are partially met, but we still have reservation with regard to those areas, particularly outlined in startup plan, budget, and finance. Significant corrections are still, um, required with regard to those charts, narratives, and graphs that they match. And, um, full accounting in various areas as referenced before and inconsistencies within that application. So, if you want to hear from any of the experts with regard to the finance, the startup plan, or any of the budgetary areas, um, we do have much of them on hand today that maybe can give you some deeper information. And the charter is also here with a response. Any questions?
Yeah. I want to be clear, the, um, reservation is not for the timeline. The reservation is for what's, the, the problems that are still remaining in the current application.
I think it's both. It's for the problems that are still remaining, but it also is in reference to, um, the timeline.
Okay.
Because there, we feel there was enough, um, opportunity in meeting with the district experts prior and before the review was conducted, that, uh, application should have been considered and submitted that didn't have so many, um, errors or inconsistencies.
Okay. And then what was the vote?
The vote, the overall vote was.
It was, um, yeah, it was eleven approved and zero denied. But approval was with reservation.
Board members, does anybody else have any questions for this? We will allow the charter to come forward.
Can I just ask one thing?
Please, yes.
The only thing that, that I'm a little bit concerned is with the reservation, particularly the budget part, we'll get into that in a little bit. But, but at the meeting, which was totally odd for me, just, this, everything about this is odd, just saying. But at the meeting, and we went back, I don't know that, that what I heard was that perhaps it was some misinformation or miscommunication. So, I don't know that I hold it against them, that, that we're going through this process. But everything about this I've not experienced before in six years. And it's just very odd to me that we would have had a clear-cut recommendation, up or down, thumbs up or down, and that's not what's happened here. And, um, but I also, with the board asking y'all to go back and meet with them, I'm not necessarily holding that against them either. So, so now I'm ready to hear.
Wait, at what point would it be appropriate to hear about the more specifics on the budgetary concerns?
Now. Now.
I think now would.
Now is a good time, yeah.
I was asking about budgetary concerns.
No, I'd rather hear it from our people. And I, I just wanna clarify too, because I thought that your committee did make a clear-cut recommendation. It was no. So, when they, they said no when they brought it to the board meeting that night.
We were recommending it at that time.
They were recommending it, right.
Right. But then they looked at the information again, and then they.
Because they sent it late. They sent it, the only. Because they sent it late. They sent it, the only person that looked at the information after they sent it three months later was Mrs. Summerlin.
We didn't review the information again. We reviewed additional information that was submitted after. So the initial application, there were things that were inconsistencies. There were clarifications that were sent back, and there was additional information that was provided after.
And committee members reviewed that, yes?
Yes.
Now, the big controversy that we're hearing though is that that information was in the application buried somewhere in the six hundred and ten pages and that the committee overlooked it. Is there truth to that?
There may be truth to some of that, but there are still areas that are partially met that are inconsistencies, that are not inconsistencies we overlooked. They are actual inconsistencies.
You know, I'll tell you, I had a little more time to spend with that six hundred and ten pages, matching that up against the additional information. And you're absolutely right, there were some pages that said, "We provided this information." It was in there already. And I compared the two charts and they were different.
Right.
So some of that's new. The numbers are very different in the budget.
Correct. And that's what some of our experts can speak to. In terms of us missing things, some was clarification. So I wouldn't say we missed anything. I said, "Maybe there are some things that they call one thing that we may call another." So it was in lieu of common language. And so clarification was required so that we would understand their meaning of some things. But in terms of things being left out or things being not present, that was still the case. And so when other things were provided, that changed some of the dynamics when the committee reconvened. However, it was an initial application, and we feel that some of those things should have been provided within this original documentation that was reviewed at the first meeting.
Where we have a procedure and we have certain dates specific.
Yes.
I am concerned that this is setting a precedence that...
A hundred percent.
Well, then why would you pick that?
I don't know.
But we told them to go do that.
No, 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 I know we did because it was based on what I understood of that night is that there was information that had been included that we were saying they had not included, right? And y'all were going to go back and review that. And what I just heard you say was, "That is still the case." There was information that was included that we, that for whatever reason, with six hundred pages, I probably missed that too, right?
Yes.
And so if someone came back and we missed information that was included, then we probably would rehear them too. Is that right?
Yeah.
Just so, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, don't I say?
So, okay, let's pretend that your whole committee reconvened and only looked at the initial application. Would your recommendation have stood as a refusal or would it have changed?
The initial application was denied. The recommendation of the committee was denial.
And when you re-looked at it, did you find enough change or miscommunications that you would have approved that initial application?
No, we only looked at things that were differences with maybe clarification when we went back to the original application. But new information was submitted, forty-seven pages of additional documentation as well as other documentation that we did review. And so some of the areas within what was reviewed, we did find now met standard with additional language, additional narrative, additional description. But the initial application was still stood as a denial. We accepted and reviewed for the committee's second opportunity. The, what was the other? Is this the second?
The second one was this.
All of these pieces to help provide...
That's how you got to with reservation.
And some of that did help with clarity with regard to one thing being called something here and something called differently over there. But the initial issue with the startup plan, the budget, and some of the finance pieces as well as the FERPA requirements and what we've had here are still, that did not change with even the additional information being submitted after. Did you ask something, Sam? Okay.
I just did want to add, we have had one other situation that we did have a recommendation for approval with reservation. And that rolled back to Lake Charter Academy, I believe. So past practice, we have had that. It has been an unusual circumstance. And to speak for the committee, I think that it was one piece. And when Mr. Ward comes up and he talks about the revenue, two pieces on the revenue, those are big issues. And by, as Katie explained, you know, the budget is huge. And so that kind of goes to that material noncompliance. You know, is it one item that's qualitative in nature? Or is it quantitative that there are so many little pieces that the board could not approve?
In your statement that you just made there, we've had this before, but it was not so much that we reconvened after the timeline, it was in the timeline.
That was in the timeline, but I just, my point here was...
I think that was what Mr. Mathas was thinking about, we're setting a precedence. As you said earlier, that if we allow this, we're setting a precedence for other people that they could come in after the timeline is up and reconvene.
Mr. Ward, can you talk about some of that?
Yeah, there's two main issues that, one of them's kind of tied with the facilities, the other one's of pure budget. One of my major concerns when I reviewed the budget, and I didn't review it in great detail because I came in on the middle of this, but more than fifty percent of their revenue in their first operating year is coming from an outside source. And that is their plans to run a BPK program and then use the profit, for lack of better terms, off of that to support the school. So not even half of their income is based on their FEFP dollars, which to me is not really a good practice, but it's unknown. We don't know if they are running an operation that can evidence their ability to do that. We don't see that anywhere in the application. So that was a major concern that I had. The other one is the funding for to purchase the building. And this is one of those things that is kind of the chicken or the egg, which comes first. Then they'll need to obtain some financing, obviously. But to do that, they'll need a contract, you know, before they can go to the bank that says, "We, you know, we operate a charter school." So that's the difficult part. But both of those incidences are one of those things that I view as if they don't have the ability to do either, either obtain the financing or support their operation with the BPK, they won't operate. This is a clear cut, so.
Any questions for Mr. Ward?
I'm not sure if my question lands there or with the applicant. Now, I'll tell you, I had an opportunity to go out and learn more about this school. And in doing so, I had some observations that gave me some clarity to the application. And one of this was this whole BPK piece and this preschool piece. That the three, four, and five-year-olds are all classed together, right, in the same classroom. So then that begs the question, if these three-year-olds are paying eight thousand dollars a year in tuition, how do you ensure that the resources are not intermingled, right? If I'm funded through FEFP as the kindergarten teacher, but I'm helping a three-year-old go to the bathroom, what gives? So I had trouble discerning that in the budget. I'm not sure if you had some kind of experience trying to figure out how they're separated?
No, and I didn't look at it from that approach. I just looked at, they would have to charge a fee for that BPK and for that, that would be significantly higher to offset the cost of the K-12 students.
You said tuition's eight thousand?
For their three-year-olds. And then BPK, of course, would be funded, you know, free through the state if you apply for that voucher.
But only for half a year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because eight thousand was higher than most around here. So there's your extra money.
Well, that's right.
It's about two thousand more.
And so, yeah, I imagine they're using that money to buy the resources. These math manipulatives are used both by the three, four-year-olds as well as your kindergarteners. I just don't know how you ensure that the public funds aren't used exclusively on the public school students.
That is a concern, but I can't ask that.
And, okay, so you said, so this spillover is expected only of the BPK, the BPK program is supposed to only provide about fifty percent of the funding?
Yeah, usually on charter school operations, the majority of the funding is from the FEFP process, just like our students are funded by. Typically, the ones that I've reviewed and looked at in the past, we wouldn't allow outside sources other than financing to really count into the operation of it. Because if it doesn't happen, it doesn't occur, then you lose fifty percent of your support and your costs are there. But again, you know, my concerns are also with that is if they're not possible in doing that, if they can't get the funding, they don't have the students, the BPK students, the three, four, or five-year-olds, then they're not going to be having the funding, they won't operate.
And what is there fifty percent outside source?
The BPK.
But what's there other fifty percent?
FEFP.
FEFP from the students.
So a hundred percent?
That doesn't add up.
No, no, a hundred percent of their budget. Half of that comes from the FEFP. The other half comes from the BPK and...
They're operating revenue for the...
Oh, like the six, the six-year-old FEFP? Is that what you mean?
Yes.
The K-12 students.
Just have me two kids in the first year, and they're all kindergartners.
Okay.
So are they considering the BPK in fundraising, in fact, in revenue of company fundraising? BPK is the fundraiser.
Yes, ma'am.
And is the BPK up in money now?
There's no evidence of that in the application.
In their COE school.
I believe it is in their COE school, but they didn't start up that way in a COE because we pulled them there out and they didn't have the, they didn't have the three or four hundred thousand dollars worth of revenue from other sources and that.
Other questions?
No, that was helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Any other questions for our committee, and then we'll let the charter committee come forward?
Do you want to do budget first, or do you want to? I've got some curricular questions too. I don't know if you want to... No, well, stick with one topic for one group at a time. Do you want to do budget more?
We're doing everything with this group, and then we're going to allow the charter to ask your questions for this group, and we won't let them.
I guess I'm not, okay, so honestly, I was a little surprised to see that the curriculum plan had gone from the partially to the now meets, given some of the concerns about the school, the student's performance in a COE, particularly when you look at the bottom quartile, when you look at math, being lagging way behind. So what additional information gave you that comfort level to say that this is okay now?
So the additional information came in the form of the forty-seven pages that were submitted after. And our notification letter also was sent prior to that, which outlined the particular areas that we needed more information on or made it be partial in the first place. So usually, a charter after that is not coming back to rewrite based on the areas we just told them needed additional verbiage and information. So the information that was provided, our curriculum, our whole committee looked at in curriculum specifically as a team to drill down into those areas. And based on the narrative that was provided, it now meets or partially meets the criteria with regard to the explanation that was provided in terms of the understanding. So it was based on a narrative that was recently...
It's not specifics alone.
Right.
So what is the, because early age, early, like my mother was involved with the Rimes when Rimes tried to do Montessori. Like what, like the whole concept of having multi-age groups and having the older children teach the younger children. Like, it's a completely different model, and it doesn't guarantee that kids are reading on our third grade level by third grade. Like, so how do you reconcile that?
Well, we don't evaluate their model. Their model as a charter, they're free to go ahead and create a model that they feel meets the needs of the learning structure that they intend as a charter. We look at the criteria that is part of the curriculum plan. And based on their understanding and what they write to, does that meet the proposed criteria? So...
I'm totally lost. What's the difference?
Well, the difference is they can create a model with a multi-age plan and that is...
Say that it'll work.
Absolutely. As a charter, you're free to do that out of the box and propose that. So we're not evaluating whether or not they're free to create. They are. We're evaluating based on that criteria of, did you include an understanding of a curriculum plan? And with regard to the narrative that was provided, it partially meets the indicators. I mean, I think we went to fully with that. It now fully meets the indicators that are outlined.
They might have a plan, it just might not be functional.
And it's not whether or not we agree with a multi-age classroom, right? So we don't evaluate our thoughts on grade-level classroom versus a multi-age classroom. It's more spaced on the criteria. Did you have something to add to?
No.
Maybe we, do you need a copy of maybe the criteria for the curriculum plan?
I am, if they have one.
So let's say hypothetically, we approved this application now. It comes back again for renewal in like five years or so. And what threshold of performance would they have to demonstrate over that five-year period to justify a renewal? I forget how many Ds or Fs or certain grades they can have in a certain year period.
That I will have to answer in some of my learning terms. I think it's two.
Two Fs or two Fs.
Justifying a renewal. What is the criteria?
They have to have two Fs consecutively?
It's five, five years. Now, they have to provide a plan as far as they have to give us goals. Every year, they have to turn, I think it's by September fifteenth, what their goals for the year are. But I believe it's five years for the first contract, and then I think it's fifteen after that.
So I guess the...
It's new legislation.
I think you're misunderstanding Mr. Dodge's question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so if they get a D, what does that look like as far as...
They don't get rated the first year.
Well, they wouldn't get rated the first year because they'd only have kindergarten. And the following year, they got first and second grade, so they don't get rated that year. So then the third year, they'll have third grade, so they'd receive a grade but not have any of the growth components in it, no learning gains, right? Just proficiency scores? So the first year, we're going to see any sort of indicator of learning gains would be their fourth year of operation. It seems like an awfully long way out, but... So hypothetically, I guess they'll only have potentially three school grades after that five years, right?
They're starting with, the new enrollment document that they just submitted shows they're going to have kindergarten first and second the first year.
Does that match up? That doesn't match up, he said with budget.
Right.
So is that incongruency with budget?
No, no, I think there have been so many charts of that. So I forget what day I went out there, but the chart they showed me.
I will give you a copy of the second response that they sent because that was one of the questions we had that night at the board meeting. The enrollment chart didn't match the budget.
Right.
So in here, what was resubmitted, number one is the enrollment chart. And I've got one for everybody, but I'll just show you, it looks like that. So it shows kindergarten first and second. Then the second page through... Page twelve, eleven is a new budget, new, smaller. It had to do with that issue and also the teacher's salary. And the narrative in the application, they wrote that they would not hire teachers if they didn't have the numbers. In the budget, in the original application, instead of decreasing the number of teachers they had, they cut the salaries. So they revised that in this budget, okay? And then the third one was to the attachment U piece. What they submitted was a copy of their lease, their agreement with the building, Hope, which in Florida is green access. So that's what this application will be. And then to Ms. Burns's question, I have a recap of the committee vote, but it has that piece about curriculum on it that you were interested in.
So for school grading, they wouldn't get a school grade because they would only, they wouldn't have any state-tested grades that first year. So the first year that they do have state-tested grades, do they get a grade that year? Even if it's not their first year of operation? So let's say third grade doesn't, whether it's their second or their third year, I don't know which one it is anymore, but...
It would be third grade because they don't have learning gains.
Right. So they would get a school grade that year?
Without learning gains.
I don't know if they get a, for this, yes, I do, I think they do. They get a school grade, but it would just be based off of third grade scores.
Okay, so potentially, I guess, when this thing comes up for renewal again, they might have three school grades. What do they need to have in those three school grades in order to get the renewal? What constitutes the threshold where we'd say, "You haven't performed"? Are Ds okay?
In terms of DA requirements, I'd have to look. I believe it's double Fs that were...
So they'd have to have two Fs.
What if it's an F, a D, and an F?
And that's not going to happen, it's not like any...
I would have to double check with the new requirements with regard to...
Oh, go, yeah, please.
Let's hear that.
So just like our schools, if they get a D or an F, they go into DA status. And so they have to submit, they have to implement a corrective action. And defines, they have to pick from the state-required corrective action models. So they have to present to the board a plan. And then it says that a charter school implementing a corrective action that does not improve to a C or higher after two full school years of implementing the corrective action must select a different corrective action. And then it says implementation of the new corrective action must begin in the school year following the implementation period of the existing corrective action. And then it says implementation of the new corrective action must begin in the school year following the implementation period of the existing corrective action unless the sponsor determines that this charter school is likely to improve to a C. And then it goes on to say a charter school's charter contract is automatically terminated if the school earns two consecutive grades of an F after all school grade appeals are final.
So how many years is that total?
Is that four or five then?
So that's, that's three, two years, two years on the first corrective action. If they don't improve the DRF status at that point and get at least a C, then they have to pick a different corrective action. So that's three years. And then if they-
Double S will be terminated.
Yeah. So yeah, so it's five years. And then it says that if after such time, there's consecutive grades of an F, it's automatically terminated.
And kids can't lose one year.
Yeah, so we're going to-
Two things, two things about this. So first of all, at that point in time, that's not about the same thing as the five-year renewal. Right? So even if it's after the five-year renewal, we can, that's, they're done. It doesn't matter. We don't have to renew. The other thing is if this is a choice, this is a charter school, so parents are choosing to go there. In my opinion, after your first year receiving an F, a lot of those parents would then be turned off to that school. I know that's not always the case, but surely consecutive Fs, I don't know that that would even have to be something we would manage at that point. I think parents would be like-
They're not going to get there. They're setting up shop next to a couple of A schools. They're in South Lake County.
What happened at Treadway was all the kids got dumped into the local charters, the milestones that before they got shut down. Any kid that they would encourage them into the charter school, which was failing.
Yeah.
And so it took the board shutting that charter school down because there was the FFP of failing kids. Of kids in distress or however you would phrase it.
We didn't shut the board. We didn't shut that school.
At Milestone, their board shut themselves down. We didn't shut them down.
And what was the other one though?
It was Humanities.
Humanities. Was that shut down their board?
No. But both of those were at risk for sure. I mean, so they couldn't afford their corrective plans. But it's the same conversation, and this is not about Montessori, this conversation we're having, folks, just so y'all know.
No, it's just what happens when a charter goes bad.
So the wacky thing is-
We haven't assumed y'all helps.
The wacky thing to me is that this, they could set up shop and be the worst school in all of South Lake County and there's nothing we can do about it.
Right.
Well, that's why this has to be so deliberate.
Right, absolutely. Yeah, no doubt.
And this is also why Mr. Mock's audit plan, that charter process and fees and application, maybe, and then maybe now with the new legislature, he can look into some of these other things as well.
Bingo.
So it's pretty timely. And I also think board members that this would have been a lot more clear if the setting was different last time. So we were at a board meeting and we were asking these questions and I think that that communication came off really sideways. Whereas if we would have done this the first time with this committee and they would have brought forward their denial, it would have been much more clear-cut. We could have seen the timeframe and I'm not sure that we would have made the decision to go back at that time.
And that has been the process in the past. We just sort of missed it. We just went right into-
Well, if I recall, it was because there wasn't a board workshop scheduled and so that kind of, so that's why I went on the discussion because the intent was the same information we brought out, but I decided twenty twenty.
At all.
Right.
Okay, cool.
So I think you guys are good and we can invite the charter school to come forward at this point in time. Yes, thank you very much.
We got tape loss on paper.
Okay, while we're exchanging, we're going to go on like a three-minute recess. All right, we're going to come back in over here. Welcome. This is definitely your opportunity to respond, so you guys can proceed in any manner you wish. There's a big group, so. Morning.
That was the board. My name is John Liam Bruno. I'm an attorney with Ronald Law Firm in Jacksonville, Florida. We represent a lot of charter schools throughout the state of Florida. We have the privilege of representing Innovation Montessori. I'm just making some general comments and then I'm going to defer to the experts in the room, which is our clients here. As you can see, there's a strong showing of support for this particular school. Literally half of the boardroom is filled with people ready to answer your questions and hopefully alleviate any concerns that you have about this particular application. I'm going to go ahead and apologize for the state of my voice as Madam Turman alluded to, the ballfield, I coach an A U travel team and-
Say no more.
Cheering and screaming often at the same time.
Yes.
So I wanted to thank everyone again for, and I want to point out that every application is very much a process. I disagree with a little bit of the commentary that was made before about information being submitted untimely. Although we have standards in Florida statutes, particularly charter application statutes, as to what needs to be included in applications. Sometimes it is a little bit of a go-between, back-between the district and the applicant exactly how much information you want. Our position is, is that the application was efficient. It met all the objectives by statute and when information is asked to clarify or expand on that, that's certainly what we're willing to do and what we did. We appreciate again the dialogue by giving us another opportunity with a workshop to come here and answer any of these questions. So with that, I think I'm going to defer to Ms. Moore, who's going to address some of the issues first. Thank you.
Thank you all for spending the time with us today. We really do appreciate this and we, I'm here with all of our board members. Okay, thank you. The majority of our board is here as well as our assistant principal, who would be principal at Innovation Montessori Parkside, and our business operations director, Patrice Cherico, who you saw before, who's our executive director and fortunately is at jury duty. And one of our board members has the flu, so, but everyone else is here to support and answer the questions because, as I mentioned to you all before, we are wanting to bring this to Lake County for one reason. And that reason is because we all have students that go to this school and we have seen the enormous impact this education makes on them. We, friends, family, people come all over for this education. We have people driving an hour just to come to our school, the school that we created in ACOE. And we know that we can bring that to Lake County because we've learned lessons, right? Because this isn't our first rodeo, as they say. And because we're going to take the learnings that we had growing that school and bring them here and start fresh and start strong. And one of the ways that we start strong, and this is why, and I understand, we are a unique animal. And we are starting with seventy-two students and most charter schools start with hundreds. And so when you look at that and have to justify, well, how is this happening? Why is this happening? I think the why is the really important part. And the why a Montessori school starts small and grows organically is because there is the multi-age classrooms. It's really key to the education. And we've found, it's proven time and time again, when you allow for that education to develop in that way, with the three, four and five-year-olds to start, it is the strongest. And we do, we do do testing all throughout that we provide to our current district and we provide you as well, so you wouldn't have to wait till the grade. You can come in and see those assessments at any time. I wanted to share, because Kathy shared this with me today, we just received our MAP testing results for our pre-K students, or actually for our K students who've gone through the program. And one hundred percent of them are on or above grade level. And this is our first group that we've been able to have through this program because with ACOE, we didn't start the pre-K program until later. And so what we learned was, we want to start that right now so we can grow the entire community organically. And that really just, one hundred percent really is the proof in the pudding there. So we have, we want to keep it focused on the three items that the Summerlin's team identified. And by the way, we really appreciate the work that they have done. And a lot of the additional information was termed was really just our way of trying to clarify, right? Because we use this language, like, well, we thought that was clear. And so, oh, no, let's say it in a different way. Maybe we need to provide this so it's clearer. There was the intent of cooperation and partnership and we really feel like having these three items to address. We were able to prepare some things for you guys to get a real good and clear perspective that all of this stuff is already planned, handled, and we can provide that for you, so.
Okay, so I need to clarify.
This is probably it.
I'm seeing on page two of this middle-
So can you throw away that piece of paper? The chart. Okay, here's, this is, there's an issue. Every single budget you have had presented in different formats has not changed, right? It's all been the same exact numbers that we're proposing. The chart was the problem. Okay, that chart-
This chart shows two hundred and forty students your first year.
Right. That chart is incorrect. And I'm going to take complete and total ownership of this. The budget is correct with the seventy-two K students as it always has been.
All right, so do you have a chart that shows your growth over time?
I will provide you with it, yes.
Thank you.
So, but in the budget, in every budget, it is correct with seventy-two students of K. Yes. And so we can-
Can you pull up that?
Yep. So Dave, all right, so in, okay.
Okay, so to clarify, this is a bit of a misunderstanding and a bit of an overstatement by the earlier conversation. The conversation where it says over half of the money has been fundraising or miscellaneous revenue. Year one, it's forty-seven percent. And it's not miscellaneous in that it's candy sales and wrapping paper sales. It's not fundraising where we're going door-to-door where there isn't unknown. That funding, the vast majority of that funding, comes from our VPK program.
In your ACOE school.
No. From, in that year, would come from the VPK program here in Lake County. What we've prepared for you, and I believe has been submitted, is a budget to show, even if you were to say, well, there's no proven track record of a VPK program in Lake County, what happens if it isn't full? We've got it down to, what, fifty percent? Fifty percent enrollment in the VPK program and to show that we stay at a fund balance over fourteen percent. So we understand how to stair-step our expenses down with the revenue that gets stepped down, should that happen.
But you have a hypothetical number for VPK, but we have a real number of seventy-two students at roughly sixty-eight hundred dollars. And, which is four hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars in revenue. You've got eight hundred eighty-two thousand in expenses. And with a hypothetical, you're going to make it up. And that's where this is getting really outside what-
Yeah, but those expenses go along with the hypothetical VPK in that-
So what is it if you just were using your FFP?
So Dave is our business operations director and what we've prepared for you is the actual five-year projections for the VPK program independently. Which, and so you'll have that as well as the hundred percent, seventy-five percent and fifty percent to show how it works. I want to bring up one other thing that isn't clear in this that we were going to be sharing with you. There is the hypothetical program, right? We already have interest in the hypothetical program and I have a hundred and thirty people on my waiting list right now that I cannot service in a program for a private, primary.
In Lake County or in ACOE?
They're on my ACOE list. We have had people from Lake, I had the one meeting, we have twenty other people from Lake County with the one meeting. And we have advertised, we have twenty people already, and we have a hundred and thirty that might move. So, but the point is that the ACOE location-
How far is ACOE from Lake County?
The location takes twenty minutes to drive from one to the other and a lot, some of those people are in between. So we also, our ACOE program is a private program. We choose whether we want to, how we want to allocate our extra funds. We have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars next year that can support opening the pre-K program in Lake County. That is our choice. We have it. We can do it. That is an option. Obviously, though, what we'd like to do is for the entire Lake County process to be able to fully sustain itself, right? If it can't, and I understand there's all this, if this, then this, we have a lot of those responses for you today because we were provided with that and we're able to answer them. So, for example, if we didn't fill, we know that the contribution that could go back to IMP would still lead us, would leave us with a fourteen point one percent fund balance. Even if there's half the number of students not pulling from ACOE.
What if there's none?
If there's none.
If there's none?
Yeah. If there's none, one, I can pull a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars from ACOE. Two, we have, pardon?
But that's not enough for us, cool.
If you look at what we have, let me finish if I can. So we have a, our building budget includes FFNE. If you look at the FFNE numbers that are on there, it's twenty-five thousand dollars for the first year. It is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the second year and a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars approximately for the third year. All three of those items can be put into our project budget. That is what we did with the ACOE project. And then we pay that off per student as we have done. So all three of those line items, I can pull out of that budget and make sure it happens. Now, the point of why we, we don't believe there will be zero, clearly, because of the success of the program that we already run. Also, it is really important for a Montessori community and the people who love and want and have come out to get this type of education. They know that it's a three-year cycle and they want their children involved in this process. So an expectation that we would have zero students isn't realistic. So again, without marketing, without even with one Facebook post, we had twenty students or twenty families that came out, some of them with multiple children, very excited and wanting to have this education.
And how much do you charge tuition on that?
Right now in ACOE, it's eight thousand dollars. The average in Lake County is seven thousand dollars-ish, so we will look at that. look at that. And we'll look at adjusting the fees if necessary. So, and Dave can...
But if you adjust the fees, you adjust the revenue.
I know.
And so everything that you're talking about is hypothetical. Where I'm telling you, the only thing you can guarantee is, is that student has, has, has a value. I'm talking about the one that's getting the FFP.
Right. Ninety percent of our budget expenses is teachers and rent. And our funder does it by...
So, I'm saying...
Yeah. Right. So, our funder bases our rent payment on the student count. If we don't have the student count, we don't have the, we don't have the higher nut to cover.
The challenge is...
And we're not going to hire the stu, we're not going to hire the teachers to cover those people if they don't exist.
The challenge has been for me to date, that at seventy-two students, there is no way on this planet you can make it. No way.
Well, that's assuming that the expenses were to stay...
Right.
Exactly as they are.
I'm telling you that the typical that I've looked at over six years has been a minimum of two-fifths, unless you are dramatically...
Again, going back to some of the why, we, in Acoee, we have gone through organic matriculation so that we can have children, the vast, vast, vast majority of our students, climb through the grades and add a grade per year. And in that process, we're creating a culture that lives the Montessori model, where the gains in the classroom and educating the whole child are too long to list here. But part of that model relies on a slow growth. And the slow growth can be made happen by our partnering with Building Hope, who is a lender that understands and believes in that method, and has allowed us to have our expenses go step in step with our student enrollment, so that they don't need us to go to three or 400 students out of the gate. And so, we are an abduct, and we understand that completely. We just need to be able to explain some of the, some of the problems that you're seeing with it, because you're used to seeing where issues at ninety percent or eighty percent, where for us, at forty-seven, it's, it feels wrong.
Well, I don't know anything about Hope and organic matriculation and all that business. I know seventy-two kids is worth sixty-eight hundred dollars of fees. That's four thousand, four hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars, and your expenses are eight hundred.
Is it because the other $400,000 is coming from parent fees?
No, and that is, it's not all...
Because it's in this budget that we were just given.
Okay, so Dave, can you walk them through that, please?
Before you walk us through this, this budget that you just provided is different from the budget in the packet and the other packets. This is a new budget.
Okay, so if I can explain, when we were given the three items that were of most concern, the startup, how the startup worked and how the VPK program worked was of concern. There were five or six different comments on it. So, in order to be able to clarify how that program worked, we brought this budget, okay? This is only the pre-K private program, as a tool to be able to explain how this happens, right? How these shared costs, how these costs are shared, how if we don't have the teachers, or we don't have the student count, we don't hire those teachers. It's backup to the line item that is on the budget. It is not different. It's the same. It's the backup in how we determine the items that were in the budget that you all did receive. Does that make more sense? So, we wanted, it's a clarifying...
So, you take seven fifty-one here, and you, of revenue, you minus the nine sixty-three you presented?
So, this, so this is...
This is only your VPK.
This is only the preschool.
Which was included in this revenue number that was handed to us before.
So, what the...
The surplus at the bottom is included on the first budget that you received.
So, they suspect that if they have seventy-eight preschool slash VPK students, it's going to create $751,000 of revenue. Then, of course, they have some operating expenses for these preschool students. So, then, two-seventy is your surplus that goes to fund the...
Yes.
So, if it weren't for this private venture, then you wouldn't be able to operate a public school?
Well, we wouldn't be able to open with seventy-two students. We could open larger, just like that. That is why a lot of those schools do open larger, is because the economics don't work if you only have seventy kids. We understand that.
That's what I just said.
Right. No, no. So, we understand that, right? But because we have gone through this process, and because we did open up with seventy, well, I think it was a hundred kids, and people were on their credit cards, and we made it work, bootstrap. Like, there was no janitor. You got a broom if it was dirty, right? We learned the lesson that we didn't want to do that ever again. And so, we also knew that to create a truly robust Montessori program, you really do want to have that pre-K when you start. But again, I want to bring you back to the fact that regardless of the success of the IMP primary program, we do have the successful IMO primary program that is completely under our purview. So, as far as fail safes go, as far as being able to support us financially, that supports us financially. We have a $500,000 line of credit from Building Hope on the budget that was presented in the charter application. We are only pulling $200,000 from that. There is another $300,000 to support those seventy-two kindergarten students that we can pull from, and it would be incorporated into our project budget. The reason why I mentioned the FFP, those expenses that you're citing right there, those expenses, we can take away some of them, right?
I'm only looking at operating. I'm not looking at your capital over on this side.
Well, in operating, like, like we talked about, ninety percent of it is going to be staff, and it's going to be rent. And we will not hire staff to take care of students we don't have, right? Because most of it's teachers. It's in the classroom. And we also are not going to pay the rents on students we don't have. And we do have the Building Hope Executive Vice President here today as well to answer some more specific questions.
So, you're moving two-seventy over the first year?
Yes, sir.
Where does it show on this?
That's not on the...
On revenue?
Yeah.
Did you push, did you put it in revenue?
Where it transfers over to the general, the larger budget is what it's asking.
It's in the miscellaneous revenue section.
You're in the line item?
Yeah, I'm pulling it up now.
I don't have a miscellaneous revenue on mine. Sheer.
Is it the...
I've only got total revenue.
And if I subtract two-seventy from the nine sixty-three number, I get six hundred.
And again, so we've got this one that's provided today. Do you all have this one?
That is...
Did I make that far now?
It did.
And so, so here's the five-eleven for the FFP, then four fifty-two. I assume these gray boxes add up to four fifty-two? Is that how you've gotten that four fifty-two number? And that four fifty-two of the miscellaneous includes two-hundred and seventy from the VPK. Now, is that just VPK, or is that also the three-year-olds?
It's everybody.
So, VPK and three-year-olds?
Yeah. So, that's where the two budgets tie. And again, we've given more detail where more questions are asked. We're not trying to give you forty budgets to look at to confuse. We're trying to answer your questions. Because again, if anything, we're finance-heavy on this board. So, we, we have our ducks in a row when it comes to our finances. If it comes to a misunderstanding or an explanation, we're here to do that. But trust me when I say, the finances are something that we know inside and out, and have worked backwards and forwards on fifty different iterations for our current location school. So, we know a lot of our ratios, a lot of our things off the top of our head. And when questions come up, we're just trying to provide you with the detailed responses or numbers so that you feel comfortable with the numbers that we have.
What is the rent contribution, VPK? Seventy thousand? What does that mean?
It's nine hundred per student.
Yeah. Nine hundred per student.
What does that mean?
That is...
They pay a nine hundred dollars per student.
The proposed agreement with Building Hope would be at a nine hundred dollar per student fee. We have the same kind of...
So, it's eight thousand, nine hundred then?
Yeah. No, no, no. That's on charge to the school, to the families. That's of the eight thousand. They contribute two-hundred and seventy, and then they have the rent contribution as well.
So, the rent contribution from VPK is seventy thousand, two hundred, which I also see on your operating expenses here.
It's here. So, it's not part of the miscellaneous revenue funding, unless you're double counting.
No, this is all, so VPK is giving them seven hundred and twenty, seven thousand two hundred, which generates...
This is a breakdown of this?
That number. Yes.
Got it. The shaded box is a breakdown.
Yeah. Sorry. Maybe we give too much details in here.
So, you're opening with seventy-eight VPK kids?
Pre-K, pre-K kids.
That's what you're intending?
Three-year-olds and four-year-olds.
Yeah.
From pre-K to three-year-olds?
Three and four-year-olds.
Three and four-year-olds, yes. Some of it's VPK.
Pre-K three, pre-K four. VPK is more of a state...
Okay, what happens to the kids that get state funding? The, was it three and four-year-olds?
Yeah, that's the VPK. They're in there together.
The four.
But some are paid.
That's right. Okay. So, the three-year-olds pay in full. The four-year-olds, we still get the same amount of revenue. The difference between the same amount and the revenue that we got as three-year-olds is what they would have to cover for a full-time program. Because in the beginning, we don't offer a part-time. So, it is a, it is a full-time model to make it work in the beginning.
So, I'll, I'll have to pay two grand roughly, if you're getting...
Whatever the difference between those two numbers.
Yeah. The difference in between those numbers is what would be, yeah, roughly.
Yeah. So, this, this, this rent contribution, or an electrocon contribution, so on and so forth. When I look at the, then the operating budget for the entire operation, so then, for instance, your operation of plant is 110,893 for the, for the whole thing, for your seventy-two kindergartners. And that 110,000 also includes the preschool expenses? So, the revenue and expenses are accounted for in there?
So, Dave, do you want to explain why we did the, did it the way we did it? Because he's crafted this way.
So, at IMO, we have two separate budgets, because we treat them, as Jeremy said, as different animals. So, the CASA is a completely different budget to IMO. We've done the same here for IM Parkside. So, the one, the landscape one, is the preschool budget, and then the amounts flow into the Parkside budget. So, the preschool expenditures, the salaries, the supplies, the rent, utilities, that's all covered in this one, which we didn't give to you previously because we didn't have to. The IM Parkside is the one that you had previously that's, it's for the seventy-two students.
So, this one doesn't have any expenses for preschoolers?
No.
Okay. So, that's, that's all here?
Yeah. But we treat them differently, so we've kept them differently because we know what we're doing.
Okay, so...
With one caveat. The, the rent gets paid from IMP, which is why you have a rent contribution from CASA to IMP.
And is that in...
That's the seventy thousand, two hundred.
So, it's like the CASA sublets. You know, they, they pay us a rent, we pay Building Hope a rent.
Okay, okay. So, what are, where's the rent for your kindergartners?
That's in the overall rent that we pay Building Hope. And that's line, that's in the bottom.
One hundred and thirty-five thousand for the first year. It's about, it lines up from the bottom.
Depth service. I'm here, it's called depth service.
Yeah, we don't...
And some of, some of the way you're looking at these numbers, and again, you're used to seeing certain percentages coming from FFP, if, if the CASA program were completely pulled out on every, every piece, you'd see more of those normal percentages. But we roll it where the contribution comes and some of, so, again, it comes down to what you're comfortable seeing and the way you're used to seeing. But from an auditor's standpoint, we're covered in this more than we need to be. In Orange County, again, I hate to constantly go to Orange County, but so that you have some track record to explain some of this. When a school, especially a charter school, was in, didn't have the numbers adding up the way they should, they told them to contact Dave to have him work on their books.
Okay, so, the hundred and thirty-five thousand for rent for your kindergartners works out to be eighteen hundred and seventy-five dollars a kid.
If you're taking just the seventy-two.
But your rent for the preschoolers is only nine hundred dollars a kid. If they're sharing the same space...
The one thirty-five has the seventy thousand, two hundred in.
That's what I asked. Okay. So, I need to subtract your seventy thousand, two hundred out of that. And that's, so that gives me sixty-four, eight hundred, and that's the amount that your rent for the kindergartners?
Yes.
Okay.
And then divide that.
I see. And then you get to nine hundred dollars a kid.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we, I'll say, we appreciate you taking the time to dig in and understand and get our perspective. So, we appreciate it.
So, I guess ultimately, the big picture is, your operation only works because you run a side business?
The seven, well, no.
Yes, because you couldn't operate seventy-two kids.
Well, seventy, the startup year, the very first startup year, the reason why we designed this was very intentionally to support the education, and we knew that that, that would be required. Could we start with two hundred kids? Yep, we sure could. And then, then we wouldn't have to require, we wouldn't rely on that at all. However, for the education, we know it's better to do it this way. We also have a proven track record of having done this in Acoee successfully. So, that is why we wanted to do it this way in Lake County, because it's more successful for the students. And yes, the first year, we do end up relying more on that, on those funds. The second year is less, and the third year it's less.
No, that's not true.
And the, yeah, the second year is...
Two-seventy, three hundred, three twenty-five, three thirty, three forty, three forty-five, three fifty, every year you get more money from...
Let me, let me clarify. The percentage?
A percentage, but more dollars.
Right. So, less than fifty percent the first year, goes down to twenty-seven percent in year two and fourteen percent in year three.
But it's more dollars per year?
Yes, it's more dollars.
That you rely on. Yeah.
Again, some of the beginning expense of a, of a Montessori classroom, the classrooms cost more to set up in Montessori than a traditional classroom. Somewhere between twenty and twenty-five thousand dollars for the minimum, because again, the Montessori model works from concrete to abstract. So, you have tactile learning with actual objects in the beginning, and those cost more than textbooks.
And I think at the bottom line is about the ending fund balance. If you look at where we're at, eleven percent, eighteen percent, nineteen percent, we are strong, okay?
Because you're operating a profitable side business.
Yeah.
It's all about that.
That's right. I don't know why it's not all in work. Do you, do you all have this?
Yes.
Aren't they all?
You might have two versions. You might have two versions, because we ran multiple scenarios. If you look at the income from VPK line, if you're looking at one that says two-seventy, two-sixty, then one-eighty, this is kind of a scenario analysis.
That's with seventy-two students?
That's seventy-two, fifty-four, and thirty-six.
This one says seventy-eight. That's what's throwing me off.
No, th, those numbers are the FFP.
No, this is your projected enrollment if your enrollment is not so good.
Seventy-two kindergarten, seventy-eight pre-K.
Yes.
Yes.
In the far-left column. This isn't a, this isn't a progression of time from left to right. It's different scenarios from left to right. And in this, what is the percentage of the CASA? Is it one hundred, seventy-five, fifty? Is it one hundred, seventy-five, fifty? Yes, the ones are CASA.
Okay.
So, what this represents is a successful budget, year one, in three different scenarios, at a hundred percent, seventy-five, and fifty percent of both the kindergarten program and the CASA program, to show that the numbers still work, we're able to still leverage the expenses to the revenue, to create a bottom line that's still healthy and keeps the doors open, to where we don't have fixed expenses on this. The vast, vast majority of our expenses are variable, and we can pivot and adjust where necessary. And this is how we would do it if that were to become the situation. And as you can see, even at fifty percent, we're able to work the expenses to keep a fourteen percent fund balance.
Okay, so at thirty-six students, that would be the equivalent of two kindergarten classrooms. And you said the, the startup cost would be twenty-five thousand per classroom. All right, so fifty?
Yeah, startup cost shouldn't change.
Or are these all in one classroom, therefore, since it's two classes, it's only one classroom worth of expenses? Is that it? So, the more kids you put in there, the fewer materials you get by.
Our classrooms right now are thirty students with three teachers. So, it's a one-to-ten ratio. So, that's kind of how, so it would be one big classroom that has those in there. Also, if you recall, that we can fold the FFNE directly into our project budget instead of take it out of our line items. But we kept a line item in here for safety.
Your FFNE is only twenty-five thousand dollars at the most.
Yeah. That's all, that's all we pulled from here. Because our project budget, like I said, with Building Hope, we've worked with them before, with Acoee. And they right now have about, I think it's about $400,000 allocated for an FFNE for us. But we like to have a little bit in there, just for, like I said, just for protection, in case there's other things. But it'll get folded into that, it'll fold it in the project budget.
With a credit line of $500,000, you're pulling two items off the bat. So, you got three hundred available. That, I don't see how you're sustainable for more than a year unless that kindergarten program kicks off.
Well, the kindergarten program is the first year, the seventy-two, and then we start going from there.
No, no, no. I, I am not considering that, because that's a whole different venture that you're relying on that separate business to feed this, this initiative, which we're voting on. We have nothing to do with your other one. And I just, did you run a number of where your break even is based on your Montessori model if it was just FFP funding? How many kids would you have to have? And when on this chart would you get to those kids?
I think it was year two.
He's looking at it from a number of children, not at time.
Yeah. And the reason why we provided this again is because the comments we gave was all about this pre-K. But if we, like, year two, when we have, I think it's two hundred and, let me get the number right. Let me make sure I don't want to give it, say it wrong. Dave, how many is, are we on? Year two?
Year two, you have two hundred and forty kids. So, you're going from K to K-two. That's a huge jump.
Well, what we found, we have to do a balance, right? So, we wanted to do with the three, four, and five-year-old program. And then, could we just do, if we just do first graders in their own classroom, yeah, that we get the organic matriculation, which is ideal. But then, they don't have anybody to have a multi-age classroom experience with. There's also a lot of really great private Montessori schools out there that There's also a lot of really great private Montessori schools out there that their students are looking for somewhere to go. So we will, we will grow for one and two on that second year. And that year, we could sustain just without a VPK program, without a pre-K program at all. But for us, again, trying to balance all of the needs and to make a more perfect model, but not a perfect model by any stretch of the imagination, we have a number of fail safes built in regardless of that program. Because of the partners we've worked with, because of the work that we have done for over five years with our budgets, and before we even had a pre-K program, we were successful. When I, like I said, when we, we'd pick up the broom and be the janitor in the beginning before, and we just felt like that wasn't the best, the most sustainable model. We created this based on our experiences, and it works, and like I said, fail safes.
Where does the debt service go from one thirty-five to two eighty-six?
It's, it's based on that student count that I've given.
The rent per kid.
It's the rent that goes to Building Hope.
Oh, the nine hundred per kid.
Yeah, yeah.
So, remind me again, the, the threes, the fours, and the kindergarteners in one classroom?
Yes.
Then you've got first and second, another one?
Yeah, and then it'll be first, second, and third.
Oh, first, second, and third.
It'll end up being first, second, and third, and that's lower L, first, second, and third. Upper L's fourth, fifth, and sixth.
So who gets that money?
Middle school, seventh, eighth.
I think it's a strip mall. Does the strip mall get that rent money?
Oh, no, we're not in a strip mall anymore, we're in a strip mall.
That goes to the builder guy who was sitting here the other day.
That goes to Richard, where's, Richard Moreno's here, he's the executive vice president of Building Hope.
And you're involved in the real estate deal.
So...
He's a representative with Building Hope?
Oh, no, 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 the fellow that was here that owned the land.
Oh, that's the property owner, yeah, that's the property owner, yes.
So what does he get?
So building, right now, right now, Richard, would you come up? They're a funder and a developer of charter schools, and they've been doing this for, Richard can speak to it more than I can.
So what is the construction cost for the charter school, and how are you breaking that out?
Yeah, the way we have it... The way we have it broken out is that Building Hope will go ahead and acquire, and actually, we're negotiating with the property owner to see if we can get the property as cheap as possible. But the way, and conceptually, the way we work in the program and with innovations we've done it is that we take the whole program, we fund it a hundred percent, we have our own capital, we're a nonprofit private foundation. From there, then, the school then has the option to buy it at year five, basically at our cost, with a little bit of a premium on that, and then, so that's kind of the way it works. So that's how we're able to subsidize the rent over the cost of the building. The total cost of the building hasn't been defined yet, I think, how much?
Approximately four. Does rent to own?
Yeah.
Correct, yes.
If they choose that way. Are you all going to choose that way after five years?
Eventually, we'd like to choose that way when it works, it's in our best interest.
Because otherwise, in perpetuity, you get nine hundred dollars a kid for a life-long school.
Yeah, but it's, but the issue that we have is, we have limited funds, so our thing is to turn the funds over as much as we can. So we give the school incentives to take us out, unless interest rates shoot up or there's something that, that we don't know that's going to happen in five years.
So, so even in, in year seven of your projected budget, I don't see trying to acquire the facility?
Well, when you do bond, when you, there's other options. It's not like just a regular mortgage with your house, and we've learned a lot since we've been going through this process. And like, so example, if you're going to issue a bond, right? And let's say you're going to issue it, and you're ending, your cost per year is less. It ends, we would end up paying less than we're paying them. So it's in our best interest to try to do something like a bond issue, perhaps. Now, because we're not there yet, we have not vetted every single option with that. So that's why it's not like a traditional mortgage where you're saving up twenty percent to go to a bank to get a market rate, right? With this kind of a thing, it's a public, excuse me, it's a, we're a nonprofit organization, and there are lots of bankers that we've spoken to already about different options for takeout funding that we've been working with with the COE property because we did the same thing with them. Maybe an opportunity to do an overall bond issue, we'll see.
So, so when, when you approach that bond issue type route, does the cost per student go below nine hundred dollars?
Depends, it's going to depend on all the interest rates and things like that. They don't fund you from the beginning. They do not, they do not take that risk from the beginning.
So within the bond side?
I know it.
So within the debt service, you got five hundred kids, five hundred times nine hundred, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's four fifty, and you've got five twenty down here is your debt service. What else is in that number?
It's, it's the, the pre-K, the seventy thousand dollars that they're, they're being paid for that.
Plus another seventy?
Correct.
And what's the seventy there?
The seventies from the, the seven, the kids that are there, I think it's, what, eighty kids are in the pre-K program?
The one outside of the picture?
Correct, that's contributed to that five hundred.
But you're throwing them, well, I guess you...
Okay, so this is what I don't understand. Buildings aren't built in classroom at a time. So like, you're projecting seventy-two kids plus a VPK, so how are you, how are you expanding?
Okay, so for example, the way we built the, the COE campus, the early learning center was built first, which was a smaller building that allowed the, the smaller kids to move in. Now, they had that shopping center that they were educating at the same time, so it's a little different. But the way that building worked is you're able to move in there, and then later on, we delivered the other part of the building. So you do it, the design of the building is kind of like a Lego set where you have certain...
Are they modular, are they, are they pre-cut?
No, 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 no.
They're, they're separate buildings.
They're separate buildings, but what it is, it's designed to basically plug and play. So in effect, you create the, the site work, it's all done day one. And then as the demand goes in, you have it. So for example, at the current school, the demand was way more than was ever anticipated. The, the ramp-up schedule we had for that school was similar to this, we'd allowed a long ramp-up, but the, the demand has been much more, so we've been able to actually adjust the lease where it, it comes down and the purchase option prices come down.
Okay, in your facilities acquisition, you have zero dollars. Wouldn't that be facilities acquisition?
No, at the end of the day, like if we approached this whole bond issue situation, we, it would replace the amount of money that we're spending, that we have for rent, so we don't have a separate allocation number in there. And with a facility for, for Parkside, what is on the plans and already being designed where is the same type of small building that we have for the pre-K. It's like a, it's like a big house is what it looks like because that's more comfortable for the younger children, right? And that's the one that we're proposing that opens first, just that. And then when we have the other, what, what Building Hope does is they subsidize as we grow. And that's why they've made such great partners for us because they're a nonprofit, and they're not doing it just for, to turn their own dollars, they allow us to do that. And that's something, again, like Richard said, when we started this, we had a very slow-grow model because we wanted to be very conservative, just in case. And it turned out that we had so much demand that we looked and said, when, or do we have the great teachers to support adding maybe another classroom, maybe, maybe not. So we ended up adding a little bit more than we thought in the beginning. But again, it is deliberate growth and making sure that we keep the quality. So that's why, working with them on this project, we had a similar real slow grow, and then we will, we will test and adjust and see how we're doing, and we got the great teachers, then we'll grow a little bit more.
It's so slow, they're going from seventy-two to six hundred and seventy-six.
In five years.
Yeah.
Well, I also, I, if, if your class size is thirty and you've got three teachers, whatever, um... Well, you have, you have seventy-two in kindergarten. Why did you choose to do not, like, so are you going to have thirty-six kids?
To be able to...
Because we have a multi-age class, we have three, four, and five-year-olds in that classroom. And that, over time, in Orange County, we've manip, kind of manipulated, played with as the, the classrooms that we've had have allowed. But day one, we would have what we were looking for all along, where we have three, four, and five-year-olds in the same classroom with a kindergarten teacher, a VPK teacher, an assistant. So we have three adults for thirty, thirty-two, thirty kids. So we have an adult-to-student ratio of ten to one. And I understand when Mr. Guy came out, we talked about this because, again, it's a concept that you, it needs to wrap your head around. And the resources are more abundant in that room than in a traditional kindergarten class. So we have more resources per child in our model.
How many classes, if, if you're, if you're at full FTE, how many classes will you have? Because I don't know how many VPKs you have.
Five in year one.
Five?
Yes. And again, that adjusts, so everything is malleable. So if your concerns were to come to fruition, where we don't have three-year-olds and we have some four-year-olds, that would obviously get adjusted to make the finances work. It's what's best for the classroom and what's best for the finances, so we'd make it work. Just like when we were in the strip mall. We made it work even though it wasn't as pure Montessori as we wanted it to be. But once we had the facility that we wanted, we made it what that method should be. So we have kind of pivoted as we've gone along to get it closer and closer to that, the Montessori method or the approach, which is how we have it designed from day one. Because you plan for success and have contingency plans if, like some of your concerns, come to fruition.
So how many years have you all been in Orlando now?
Since two thousand and eleven.
And how many students did you start out with then?
There is a hundred and four.
A hundred and four.
And how many do you have today?
We'll be, we just pull the line for next year.
Be close to seven hundred next year.
Close to seven hundred. We were approved for our fifteen-year charter and also for an expansion to go up to thirteen hundred students, day through eight.
And is the Montessori model about being really big schools?
Well, the, what we've learned, and when we went through this initial building process, we were going to just be a school of four hundred. And that because we felt, okay, overall, we really still want to keep that family feel, we want to keep the community that we've built. And what we learned was charter school economics, and that when you have a school of just four hundred children, it's hard to provide them with all those extras you want, like Spanish, and art, and music, and gym, and all these things. So, yeah, so we had, yes, it was very good education the past few years. So we had a lot of very, very long board meetings. We started bringing food because they would, they would last five hours, and we knew everybody's fed, they're happy, they could keep talking. Anyway, so we, I highly recommend it, absolutely.
Chair bring the food?
Yeah, and everybody, we switched, we did, we take turns, and it was fantastic. It was best, best decision we ever made. Anyway, so in that, when we, we realized that what makes our community so strong are two things. One is in the classroom. That experience that that child is having with their friends, and they're in these classrooms for three years, they're developing these lifelong friendships, they're developing these relationships with these teachers. When they get in the car and go, mommy, look what happened today! And we get those stories back from families, that doesn't, that's per classroom. So if we have one classroom or ten classrooms, if we have the, the really rock stars in those classrooms, then we're going to be able to multiply that experience. And so there was a little bit of, are we going to be able to do this? And what we found, we have ninety-nine percent of our students returning, ninety-nine percent. They're happy. And they're also, when we did the study from UCF, and they, and they asked them, do you feel loved and supported at school? And ninety-nine percent said yes, right?
How many classrooms do you have?
Right now, we have, we have eight lower elementary, which is first through third. We have got five primary, which is that three-year-old, four-year-old, and kindergarten mix. We've got four upper elementary, which is...
And fourth, fifth, and sixth.
And we've got, and four middle.
And one, one ninth grade?
And ninth grade next year, yeah, actually, I was, I was quoting you, previous year's number.
And to, to put some perspective about, is the goal to be large? Remember that we're going, that's the population from three years old to eighty-two. And so when we think about it, we feel like it's a big number, but then if you thought about what's the average elementary? What's the average kindergarten? What's the average middle school? You know, the middle schools can get larger than what we are.
So it's still small when you say per school?
The, the economics makes sense, obviously, because I'm, I'm concerned about your starting numbers. But I, I then sort of go back to my understanding of what your concept is of Montessori. And it just seems that thirteen hundred kids that are at different levels, right? And managing that just seems...
We, you know, we have our pre-K program, then we have our elementary program.
I'm not trying to get into business.
Yeah, no, 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 and then we have, it's okay, because...
We'd love to have you come out.
We, we would, and then we have the middle school program, and that is, we've been able to develop our staff from, we're very big on promoting from within. Kathy's a wonderful example, she was a Montessori teacher for many, many, many years, and had that zeal and that ability to be, to get into leadership. And so when we do that, and when we grow the entire community, both our staff and our families, then it really makes it not feel like a big school because there are these pockets. And our primary program is a cute little house, and they're, they're so wonderfully dedicated. We have probably by, by far and wide, the largest and most dedicated volunteer population because they know, they know what their child is getting. And for that, we, that's how we protect the model, is staffing, the culture, and cultivating that community and family relationship. And that's why we started with those meetings with Lake County, just starting to identify, who are those really passionate parents? I have one woman who's called me four times. I just want to make sure, how's it going? Because they're excited about bringing this to their children, so that makes us excited.
If I can add, you know, I guess I have the broadest span of children in the school. I have, my grandkids, my granddaughter is down in the primary. My, my granddaughter, when she entered primary, was more reclusive and less engaged. This young lady just got a Starling Free Esophagus Report Card, brought her out, interactive, and she's at the age of four where we can't shut her down, it's totally on. But then at the same time, I have a, a nine-year-old grandson that is diagnosed with ADHD. That in the traditional setting, it doesn't work for him. In the Montessori setting, this young man went from ones to threes and excelling. Why? Because it's the whole student that we're teaching. When he has to run off excess energy, they go outside to the field and they run off excess energy, bring him back, plug him into the program. But the beauty of it is his, his fellow students are more concerned, did you take your meds? Are you doing what you're supposed to do? And they're, they're actually helping teach their peer. Then when you get to my high schooler, who has been in this since third grade, she's going to be going into high school, you'd have thought these kids were going off to college with the connectivity and the yearbook signing that they had. It was more, I kept going to my wife, who's also the PTO president, I'm fully engaged, if you have. I was the reluctant board member because I had so much going on, but I spent one ti, one night listening to the Montessori model and then several hours in the classroom and around the, the growth and the strategy of how to develop and create a alternative learning program without it being an alternative program, if you follow what I'm saying. This was just another way of reaching students, and so when you looked at our success, that is why we drove an eight-hundred-person waiting list. That's why we have parents from Lake County already saying, can I come to Orange County? So the demand is there, and I just, you know, as a, we did the fiscal side, so I just was quiet, I do it on a daily, I don't really want to get into it. I can tell you the fiscal soundness of this school is incredible in that we are not in debt. We're not going the wrong way, we're not your typical charter school. All of us are parents who have kids in this school, and it is through that volunteerism, I think, that really pushed me over the edge to say, I'll take on another board. I, I'll just close by saying, the proof is in the pudding with from my four-year-old granddaughter to my nine-year-old grandson, to my eight-year-old second grader, my eleven-year-old fifth grader, and now my fourteen-year-old ninth grader. Because they've all been able to plug in. And at one point, the twenty-eight-year-old, because we're a blended family, we are the Brazwill bunch, my twenty-eight-year-old was actually a teaching assistant. So it was not just out of trying to generate a revenue. She was so sold out that her kids were going to the school that they became. And I know that my wife just lost her PTA, her, her PTO chairperson for the rooms because now she's going to go and use her teaching degree to start teaching in our model. So trust me, we're, we're very cognizant of the financials and making sure it works. And Mr. Mathias, you're, you're spot on, without the other piece, it is a part of our model, it is our model. But it's an, I don't like the term fundraising, it's an alternative way of financing the startup through leveraging a for-profit revenue almost in a nonprofit environment model so that I can generate funds out of one aspect and take those funds and reinvest them towards moving the school forward so that it isn't such a large expense. I think where other charter schools sometimes get in trouble is they jump out too hawk, too fast, too heavy, and they don't do the fiscal responsibility and the conservative approach or have an alternative stream of funding. So I appreciate your concern, and I hope we've explained it, but I just want, you know, I'm generally the quiet one that sits over here, I try anyway. But I, I'm just so energized about it because I've seen it. And from an, an MTSS standpoint, I, I've got one other child that's on a 504 plan, and it is because of the Montessori model that has allowed her to move ahead and not be held back because she may not fit the traditional model. So, great model, we're all fiscally conservative here for the most part. And I, I appreciate your questions, though, about asking us to explain the additional revenue model that allows us to sustain the startup in the beginning as we progress towards, which is less dependency upon state dollars or Lake County dollars, and also has us to make sure that model works so that we can fiscally fund and continue to sustain ourselves.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, is anyone going to address the issues that the district raised about the timing of providing the information and it not being all provided at the initial application deadline?
Sure, I'm, I'm happy to address that. And also, there were two other items on the list that they gave us with safety and security as well as purpose. And so Kathy's going to respond to those. But as far as the timing goes, and I tried to address this a little bit before, in our estimation, when we were asked for additional clarification, we provided it. We don't feel like we provided additional information. We felt like that was a clarification of things that weren't understood or were missed. So they missed a few things, but we, our horrible chart, right? And we missed a few things, and they're granted, we will take ownership of that, absolutely. However, the intent and the ability to work together to be able to resolve some of the communication issues and maybe some of the things that, because we are a different model, because we use different language, sometimes it is just a matter of, oh, no, no, no. I think there was a, the algebra thing, like they, they had it coded this way, and we code it this way. And it really was, oh, you code it that way, okay. So it wasn't substantive in a lot of ways, it was communication, so...
How about, how about there was an attachment U for the facilities?
Right, and...
Specifically asked for very direct information?
Right, and what I explained...
And I understand that's still not been provided.
No, well, okay, so attachment U was if you have a facility, then provide. We do not...
No, it says if you don't have a facility, doesn't it?
So in MAR, and what I explained in one of the documentation is that when we consulted with our attorneys and everything, we said, well, do we have to do this because nothing's signed? We can't give you signed information. And it was, okay, so that, we didn't feel like we had to include it in the beginning. However, after having the conversation and going, oh, well, that would be helpful for them to see a sample lease from Building Hope. That was included in the backup documentation, because I, I didn't realize we had to, because that wasn't my interpretation. But when we found out that they wanted to have that information, we said, okay, here's the lease. Here's a sample lease from Building Hope. Here is the landowner. Here's where the land's going to be. So we, that was, I guess you could call that additional information. But again, it was a matter of, we thought we were doing it in the way that was requested and required, but it, the team wanted additional information, so then we provided that. So for me, um, and also, we did not have an opportunity to have this workshop before the board meeting. You know, that, that was, um, we, we were trying to be good partners and provide additional clarification when was asked. So that is, from our perspective, that's what we were doing. So, and, um, so Kathy can speak to the FERPA, as well as the school safety a little bit, and I can add a bit onto there as well. So would you like her to address those things and we can have?
FERPA, yes, we absolutely are going to abide by all the requirements of FERPA. Um, I'll mention IMO, not as a disrespect to Lake, but just because that's what our experience has been to this point. But we have been operating this school since 2011 there and abiding by all the requirements of FERPA in regards to, um, making sure that all student records are, um, kept safe and secure. All hard copy of records are kept in, um, fireproof cabinets in a secure room in the admin building. Absolutely the same scenario will take place in, um, IM Parkside. And we make sure that all electronic, um, data is secured with only proprietary access given to, um, staff members who need to access it. And we make sure that, um, uh, parents request to access their students' data or met within 30 days. And we make sure to, oh, anytime we get public records requests, we go through our lawyers to, um, to make sure that we're, um, sharing that information appropriately. And parents are allowed to decline, um, being, their information being shared in the directory. And so we're very, very conscious of, um, making sure that, uh, privacy is protected. All our staff go through FERPA training, um, at the beginning of the school year and will at IMP during teacher planning. Anything I can answer about FERPA?
Well, is there something specifically provided? I'm looking at the summary of the additional question for the, from the members of the committee, and it said that FERPA was not addressed. There was no information about understanding of FERPA or parents' rights? That there wasn't any, uh, understanding or lack of understanding of FERPA in the application? Now, are you telling us that there was a specific outline in the application of what FERPA was?
Um, I think there was a statement that, um, basically said that we were going to comply with all the requirements of FERPA.
We didn't realize the extra information was the detail that you wanted. We just thought that if we said we're going to follow the law, that that would have been sufficient, but having this additional information...
Did y'all have access to the standard application? I mean, is that the one you use in the Orlando?
Yeah, and that's, that's, that's the same response, actually, that we gave for our high school and for, um, our charter renewal, and it was acceptable there. So it was a, but providing this additional information, and I also have, um, a written documentation that I can provide you, that's on that drive right there, if you'd like to have that in writing, to make sure that it confirms our understanding of FERPA. We also felt that, you know, having operated the school since 2011 and abiding by those things, again, we know now. We've provided this additional information, so...
And then, um, safety and security. Obviously, a lot of new stuff coming down the pipe, um, as a result of Senate 726. And we are taking all of this onboard, um, in our current operations and will obviously apply it all to IMP. And we are, we have discussed as a, uh, an organization that we will, um, you know, be taking, uh, part in that voluntary, Coach Aaron Weiss, um, uh, school safety officer funding, and that we are going to be running risk assessment meetings, um, and we will apply everything we learned there at IMO to IMP. And we will be doing active shooter training and we'll be running those once a semester. We have in Ocoee, worked with the Ocoee Police, um, Department to come through our campus and work, um, optimum safety procedures there. And we absolutely will plan on doing the same, um, at IM Parkside. Um, also, we, uh, part of our, um, Montessori curriculum is, uh, grace and courtesy, um, kindness and peace curriculum. And so we put an awful lot of emphasis on working on those sorts of problems as they occur in the classroom. And we dig into those sort of issues. And we have a full-time social worker on staff. We're very excited about the additional funding that's being made available through the state for, um, student mental health. We absolutely will put that to its absolute best use. And we do have, uh, at IMO currently, a full-time social worker, as I said, who runs peer counseling groups for middle schoolers, who also, um, supports, uh, children in fish groups, which are, uh, families in separate households, kindness groups for children who struggle with that, anxiety groups for children who struggle with that. And, and we are also, um, uh, very onboard with the CDC paper on the prevention of youth, uh, violence and, and working all those facets into our curriculum and in our daily, um, just, uh, how we exist as a community. So we're going to take all the preventative measures that we can, absolutely. And then we're going to take all the, um, security matters onboard very seriously. Um, at the primary building, I know we have, uh, looked at some practicalities, like having that single entry, um, to that building, having security cameras. We will follow district requirements around background checking and volunteers, and making sure that everyone is cleared before they can interact on campus with students. And that any contractors who come on our campus are licensed through the district, um, as approved vendors. And so just taking security very, very seriously, absolutely.
So where, where's the, um, the expense for some sort of armed person on your campus? Where does that happen?
Um, so that, I, right now, we are not funded for that. Um, but I know with the new funds that are coming in through, um, the Marjorie Stonewall Douglas, um, Stoneman Douglas funds, that we will be looking to get an SRO officer.
So, and this is...
Sense the, sense the application.
Yeah, this is, this is all...
Sorry, that's laughter from this side. But, uh, you, I, I...
It's not going to cover.
It's not going to, thank you, yes.
We know it's not going to cover it full. And this budget was created prior to that.
Sure.
So there's no way that we could have anticipated that that, to put this on the budget. However, that is going to be a portion. Now, again, we're starting with a small, uh, group of kindergarteners and we will be able to, um, to balance that out. And I was just looking at the budget to try to find the line on that we did have.
To give you some idea of how we pivot and adjust, it's in the budget for next year at the IMO campus. So when it, when something changes in our environment and something becomes a new guideline or a new rule, we obviously follow it and find the funds to make it happen.
So, uh, your ending fund balance after year one is only 130,000. In year two, it's 196. So I assume that some of that ending fund balance would be reduced by having to buy a deputy's car...
Yeah, or we make different choices, right? Or we make different choices on, for example, the different security items that we're going to incorporate in the build, right? So can we have, like, let's say we didn't put shades in there and now we want to put shades in there. Do we take it out of an FFNE, you know, out of outline item? Or do we, or we put it in the project budget? A lot of things we can shift over there.
They have the flexibility of moving capital when they're operating, which some of us don't.
Yeah, so that's, it's helpful. There are some benefits of that, right? So, um, again, what we've been able to do is, over this, the very long time that we've run the charter school, there are always things that come up, right? And that's why we voted as a board to keep it at 5%, not 3% that we had to have, because we wanted to have an extra rainy day fund. And we're not showing anywhere near that level here, even higher than that, because we understand that, especially with the new venture, that there's a test and adjust period and there are things that might be, um, different, right? So as long as we are healthy and strong and can take, our board has a, a two-system approach for how we make every single decision. And I'm joking about this, but we'd say it all the time, because it's what's best for the student and what's best for the long-term financial stability of the school. And that's exactly how we've run, um, and it's the same board. And that's why we've been able to stay strong.
They could use a guardian also, which would be a lot less. So... Is, is there, within the confines of, of the application process, and I'm going to get, I think we could beat these numbers to death all day long. Um, but do you have, do you feel like that you absolutely did your best? Because even today, you were still handing out information that was updated. And, and of course, we certainly have passed, yeah, way beyond what is normal. Um, would it be reasonable if y'all came back and did a complete package? Do you think maybe that's fair?
If that is something that you guys would like, we would. And the additional information that was provided here was not a statute requirement that we include the information about the private pre-K. We were doing that in effort to try to be open and, and develop this information with you guys and share. Um, was it perfect? Absolutely not. Clearly, it wasn't. Otherwise, we wouldn't have had, you know, communication difficulties or clarification. Were there things that, that your staff missed? Yes. But were there things that we should have done better? Yes. But I think that now that we've gone through this process together and understood and came to, to some clarification, like I said, with things like FERPA, clearly, we know that we've been doing that for a long time. It's just, we didn't verbalize it in the way that it needed to be in the packet for Lake County. So, you know, that is, that is something, sure, we could put it all together in the document that gets the stamp of approval. Absolutely, we would do that.
I, I personally enjoy your spirit. I mean, because you can just sense that, that your kids are very well taken care of. I am very, very concerned about that, that outside funding source. I still am, legitimately. And that where we have, and the most important thing that we can do is make sure that you're sustainable for the benefit of our kids. And you heard us speak about earlier, not addressing y'all at all. But if we make a bad decision, it could be five years before we have a chance to fix that and we would have lost that kid. Makes sense? So in the case of some other, and, and you've spoken before with us. I don't know, I don't remember where, was it Pinecrest?
Yeah.
Okay, Pine, oh, bingo. Okay. And, and they have, and they received the same scrutiny from me about their financials and where any shortfall would be met, as would be expected. And it wasn't based on a hypothetical enrollment of some kids that we don't know are going to exist or not exist. I get empirically, and in y'all's heart of hearts, you believe it, that it will. And I would hope that it would, but I can't make a decision on that part. And no pun on the Hope part.
Can, can I just ask on that, then?
Yes.
If the concern is that the pre-K students don't come, then maybe we didn't do a good enough job of explaining that we adjust and pivot and make it still work, like from a financial...
I can't say we adjusted and pivoted on 72 kids. That's the problem for me.
Right, but it's only a one, I don't want to say it's only a one-year problem. But let's say in year one, there's zero three and four-year-olds. It's a funding gap that we have to find a, a fix. Most of it is in variable expenses. We wouldn't even need the entire $300,000 extra that Building Hope is willing to give us to make up the gap. The expenses are so variable in nature that we don't have to incur the expenses of that full budget. So if we don't have to have the expenses of that full budget, the shortfall isn't nearly what you're thinking it is. And if it's not that big, then an extra hundred from Building Hope makes it happen. And year two, that population of three and four-year-olds that you're concerned about not coming represents that much smaller of a portion of our budget. And it would give us a full year to understand what is and isn't possible in Lake County with three and four-year-olds and the recruitment. But it also gives us an opportunity to look at year two, but years two, year two's budget to make sure it's financially sound. We have been pivoting every year based on what is and isn't possible, because we've been looking for property for quite a long time now and running different models on this parcel, that parcel, different student enrollments. So the idea that we wouldn't be able to pivot and adjust, should there be zero demand, which I don't think is a realistic understanding of three, four-year-olds. But if we went with nobody, it, it essentially becomes a one-year problem, that we fix that one-year problem and we pivot and adjust in future years.
We also have the choice that if, if for some reason we had zero students that were in three and four-year-old, that we could do K1. We could do K2. This school started K1, too, the Ocoee, uh, branch. And so we, we have choices that we can make to support that as well. And like I mentioned earlier, the Ocoee primary private program is run by this board. And we can donate, we can do a zero-interest loan directly to IMP to support that program. So if we've got $125,000 coming from there, we've got another $300,000 coming from Building Hope. And just by the way, Building Hope, they've run charter schools all over the country and they have a very strict underwriting process. They're not giving away candy, okay? We, we have met their requirements because of our success and our ability to handle and manage our budgets. And our, our finances, even, even when you look at our auditors, our track record is impeccable. And it's really important for me to say that, because we don't, we don't want to do this based on error or ferries or hypotheticals. We know that if none of that exists, we have all these other fail safes to make sure it happens. And because, when Jeremy mentions pivoting, if we had to open K1 instead of pre-K through K, we could. It's not our ideal version. Our ideal version is, is what we presented, starting with three, four and five-year-olds. If we had to start with first and second grade, we could, but we don't, we want to present the ideal first, right? You've got to present what you hope for and what you know to work best. And then if for some reason that doesn't happen, you go with all your fail safes. And if all those fail safes, we've, we've got like six of them. If every single one of them doesn't come through, we can also increase our student count. That is an option for us. We will have the facility, a primary facility that's, that will be suited to hold 150 students. So I can put them in. We have a high school charter approved in Orange County and in ni- and next year, starts in ninth grade. Um, perhaps, we would like to, yes. But that'll be a different charter and that'll be a little bit down the pike here. Um, as we organically grow, we've got some time. So, um, and also, we want our...
And you'll have five years or six years or seven years of...
Yeah. Yeah, you'll have plenty of time to look through it. And also, we, our, our high school model in Orange County will have been alive and active and robust for many, many years to be able to look at as well. Yes.
I have a question. So on year one, in 1920, you're planning on like a 6,000, 8,000, sorry, square foot bill, which is the small, as we mentioned, right? Okay, that sort of makes sense to me. But in year two, opening off fall 2020, you are planning on a 60,000 square foot. And that's not budgeted?
It's, it's still at the per-student lease rate with Building Hope.
You mean, none of debt service?
So they still pay $900 a kid, regardless of how much facility is used or not used?
Yeah, we'll have some empty space that year. Yeah, we'll have some empty space that year.
We, we ultimately pay for it, but they're subsidizing the beginning. So in the beginning, we're not paying quite what the interest would charge. And so, yes, we do get subsidized, if you want to look at it that way, from Building Hope. But in subsequent years, we have a revenue stream that can more than pay for what we are required to pay through the lease agreement, so we can pay down that to get to the, pardon me, original purchase price, which is exactly what we're doing with the Ocoee campus.
So you have a way to reset price? The, the price is, it's, uh, is the actual cost.
So it's, we, the, the way we work is completely transparent with the school. So when we decide what the costs are, they're signing off on all the costs. So that is what the purchase price is.
On the ultimate cost.
On the ultimate cost, yes. Correct. And then in the design, and we'll go through some more iterations of exactly what that square footage and the delivery, but the, the price is completely transparent to the school.
The total square feet is 58, 50?
58,000.
58,500.
Right now, we're estimating about, uh, 180, $80 a square foot. It depends on the land and site work. We still have some modifications there. I mean, yeah. Right now, it's, there's, you know, we've got a lot of variables with steel costs and some of the other construction costs have been, been moving around. And then they're going to be hearing from me about shrinking the building a little bit, so...
Healthy engine.
That's $10 million.
$12 million.
Correct, yeah, it's probably going to be less than that when I get done.
Okay, so $12 million. And, and you guys are going to be paying a thousand, a thousand something more, maybe 1,000, 1,000?
Yeah, it's going to be about, uh...
It's a million in change.
Yeah.
And then, so they're paying a million in change and then you have to deal with how you cover it?
Uh, correct, but it's, it's...
That I know. There's your, there's your next business venture.
Remember, we're a nonprofit, so it all goes...
We all, we all know our own profit's work.
Exactly.
I'll be starting one.
Okay, thanks.
Board members, do you have anything else?
Well, well, I've got some non-budget type questions.
Yeah, let's move on to those.
Been consumed in the budget. And, and I guess that maybe, Phil, and some of these, I guess, will have to be philosophical things that maybe approve or not approve an application. I guess I've learned over time that I developed some opinions and they, they can't necessarily hold us back, but just one of those things that you roll your eyes on and shake your head. So this business venture, though, this, this, operating this preschool is the only reason the model that you presented works. And we can't hold them back for having a profitable business venture, right? So, I mean, clearly, they're going to have some kids. Can, can we say, you're, we don't think your business venture will be profitable? But I, I know there are going to be kids there, you know? Okay. Okay. I've got calls from some of them. But anyway, okay. So, so, I guess, for me, some of my questions shift back to some of the conversations we had that, that late night in talking about the academics and specifically in the math. And maybe this is one of those cases where they have a plan, but it doesn't necessarily have to be a good one. I, I don't know, maybe this is one of those. And so, I, I, of course, had to look at, at how you've performed math-wise in each of the other grades because my concern at that time was only half your students were proficient in math, right? So, so what gives? And, and I think you all have acknowledged that, leading up into third grade, you're acknowledging that the students will be behind according to the state assessment model. But then, in the later years, fourth, fifth grade, they'll catch up when they actually start using some textbooks. And what I found is, is not, not true. So, in fourth grade, I still found that your math students were performing under the state average, the gap widened in fifth grade and in sixth grade. So, I'm concerned as to when that gap actually closes, because I'm not seeing it.
Can I ask, related, I don't understand, I know the Montessori model well, and I don't understand how your math scores would be low or why, because-
Because they don't use grams.
Montessori teaches multiplication in kindergarten.
So, so here's why, because they-
All right, well, before we get into that characterization-
I know why.
Mr. Dodd was at our, our school for probably two and a half hours last week or the week before, all players together at this point. So, I was a high school math teacher. And without knowing it at the time, I incorporated Montessori methods into the classroom to bring people's understanding of the concrete up to speed. And one thing that the Montessori method does in math is it goes from con-, concrete to abstract. And for an example, I would say, what's four times three? In your head, you either popped in with twelve and you visualize a one and a two, where you saw four X three equals twelve. And all of that is abstract. The concrete underneath it is there's four piles of three teddy bears or four piles of three apples. And that's how the kids understand, the tactile understanding of what four times three means. Going from concrete to abstract takes longer through the beginning part of the math education within Montessori. And so, third, through third grade, potentially even through fourth grade, you're, you're getting behind what a traditional model would expect you to get to. But in that fourth grade, you see the two lines cross. And the Montessori method produces math that is above and beyond what a traditional model gets because it's so founded in the concrete.
At what grade?
Usually, fourth or fifth.
I'm gonna, I'm just going to interrupt you for a second. I'm, I'm gonna like respectfully just say, this is a philosophical conversation. And the concrete to the abstract methodology is not Montessori-based only. That's something that we do in Lake County schools as well. So, I have a, I'm going to sit back from this, being a college instructor in mathematics, methods, and elementary education, that this isn't just happening here and there isn't a gap in our kindergarten students when they finish. There isn't a gap in our first grade students or our second grade students. And our kids are doing very well mathematically with the CRA model, which is the concrete to the abstract. So, I'm not really sure where this research is based that you're referring to in regards to this gap being magically corrected in fourth grade or fifth grade.
So, along with-
That's just it, the gap doesn't even magically correct according to your data.
Right, it doesn't, according to data.
So, along with that, with the students that are in the kindergarten now, a hundred percent are on grade level or-
What, what assessment did you give?
Math, it's the math assessment. And these are students that we got in the program. So, right now, when you look at the scores, remember this has been a school that's been around, we are still relatively new, okay, seven years, right? And in the very beginning of the process, and we shared a little bit of this with you when you were out there, we have stu-, we, this is not just our pure, organically grown students that were with us, all of them from the get-go, to be able to fully flesh out this model. All of those students that are tested in there, some of them came from outside in different places and this, that, and the other, didn't have Montessori backgrounds. Just like everyone else, we have our challenges. We also have been working very diligently because we weren't happy with the scores. We're, it's not that we're going to stand there and say that we love them, that we thought they were fantastic, of course not. So, over the pat, the moment we got the, those last scores and actually the year before we started this, the year before that, we, we backwards designed from the standards and says, okay, why aren't, why aren't we having that? Why isn't this matching up? This should be exactly how it was. Some of it, yes, it's because students didn't have the background, they didn't have the concrete to, to grow into.
But that happens in our school.
It happens everywhere, right? So, we said, why isn't this happening? Okay, well, then, we need to backwards design from the standards. That happened that year. This year, as, as soon as we got those scores, Patrice and Kathy worked very, very hard on bringing in trainers, bringing in Michael Doris from the American Montessori Society to work directly with our teachers and saying, we're not bridging this philosophical gap, right? Because other people have to, why aren't, what, what is going on here? Let's improve the instruction. So, they've been working on that very diligently the entire year this year. And that is a major focus for us educationally, obviously. We, this is what it's about, is making sure those students are prepared. We know, like for the background of the phil-, philosophy, we know it's solid. But if in the execution, I get your point, we're not seeing it there, we are working, we are growing there. We've been, we have never been to those levels that you guys were talking about earlier, about D's and F's and things like that. It's a solid performance, but it needs to be better. And so, how do you do that? You support your teachers, you grow, get the training in people who are doing this successfully, done to connect the dots, right? And those are the things, and that's where we're putting our resources. Over the summertime, we're bringing our teachers in for two weeks and then two weeks and there's like four weeks on some of the teachers and three weeks on other teachers for these very reasons, because we want a more robust program. And that focus on teacher training is something that we are bringing to IMP as well because we can, our sister school, right, at Innovation Montessori Ako'i, who currently has three, four, and five, or third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, all the way to eighth grade, will dig in, right? So, like I said, I can't pretend that we loved those scores either, no.
So, if you haven't figured it out at that school, then why go open another school until you've got that model perfected?
So, so, the primary program that we're starting in three, four, and five-year-old, there's the proof, right? And so, this is the one hundred percent of on and above grade level, right? Because we have had those students since the beginning. As I mentioned before, when this school started, we didn't have the pre-K program, we didn't have a small growth, they started the K-one, two. And what we realized is there's never become gaps. And you have students coming in at second grade and third grade, they've never had, tons of them, right? And it, it tips the cultural balance and it tips the educational balance. So, for this to work really successfully, you want to have them for the majority of time.
That's not going to happen in your model because you're jumping to K-two, you're jumping, it's in, in one year.
Into, you're going to have gap kids. First and second, right? So, that one year, again, you have to balance. It's not an absolute perfection model. Can we not do second graders and just do first graders and only do organic? Yes. But then, we had to ask ourselves a question, what did they miss by not being in a multi-age classroom? What did they miss by not having second graders?
Right, so I'm saying you will have that, exact problem here.
We'll bring in some. Before, we had to bring in a lot, right? Before this current board was here and before our current administration was here, they lost a lot of students because they didn't know how to do it. They went through the fire and they brought in a lot of methods that were not Montessori. And when we came on and when we had our new administration come on, we said either we're Montessori or we're not. And so, digging in and being able to correct some of those things, and like I said, having gone through the fire, it's not like it's been a cakewalk, right? We, we know, we have the grit to be able to withstand and say, if we're not doing well, we're going to improve it. So, we, again, it's, there's a demand from families for this education that we've, that we've been, that are asking us. And we felt like, you know what, we have seven hundred people on our waiting list for next year for this, this education. And it's more, it's a whole child education. Do we have room to grow, room to work? Yes, we do. But when other families were asking for it, we said, yes.
So, have you gone in and broken down your data? Let's say, sixth grade last year, thirty-nine percent of your students were proficient in math. Did you look at that thirty-nine percent and figure out what proficiency was garnered from the students who had grown organically through your model and what percent had been come in through the Orange County schools?
Yeah, and Patrice Cherico, who is our data person, right? And she is the one that's in, on jury duty right now, can go very, very granular with you with all those different questions because she has all the data spreads. She's, I don't have it in my head. As board president for four years, and so, we kind of wanted to keep the education really focused on the educators.
Well, I'd love to see if there is a difference in-
Yeah, absolutely.
Whether or not those students were behind when they came into you, right?
Absolutely.
Because maybe they progressed, I don't know.
That does happen, so, yeah.
So, the, the other question I've got in terms of student achievement is in the learning gains. And, and this maybe goes back to speak to some of the concerns that the group had about your MTSS process, that only forty-two percent of your bottom quartile had made learning gains in ELA. So, are you adequately addressing the needs of the struggling students?
Um, we actually have, Nicole, would you care to speak?
We have our MTSS ESC specialist.
Nicole, if you want to go to the podium, that'd be great, thanks.
Hi, I'm actually not the current MTSS coach at the school. I'm the staffing specialist and the ESE teacher there. We actually just, in January, got a new MTSS coach on board and we're changing our entire system. So, right now, we're using the iReady program, which we just implemented, which we had not done in the past, but we're not doing it with our tier-one kids. Only our tier-two and our tier-three students are getting iReady as part of their instruction two times a week for about twenty minutes, working on those skills.
And that is, that is the intervention, the iReady?
You have a ratio of one to ten and you're using iReady?
I was wondering if iReady is Montessori-based.
It's not, at all.
Right, so, we're, but, so we're using it as the inter-, some of the intervention.
You go sit on the computer program for twenty or thirty minutes.
Not fully, no. That, we have our tier-three students are being pulled individually by the MTSS coach as well. And the teachers are being flagged and implementing strategies when necessary.
Has that been effective?
Well, we only started it in April, so she started in January and then we started the program and that is-
So, not enough time.
We don't really have enough data, yeah. Right now, we, we don't. So, typically, what we were doing was our tier-two students were receiving interventions in the classroom with the teacher, tier-three students were being pulled out of the classroom, which is still happening, but we're, we implemented a new program to try something else.
So, you know, when I look at your data, it's just one thing that jumps to my mind is that cardinal sin of teaching to the middle comes to mind, that you, you get these kids to proficiency and the kids that are high are going to continue to perform proficiently, right? They're going to get you that little tick mark in the grading formula. But when you look at the learning gains of all of your students, it's about half. And the learning gains of the bottom quartile is under half. I just have to wonder if there's a segment of the population that's getting ignored in this system, in this multi-age classroom. And, and I think, okay, I've got a three-year-old, right? And I think about who in my family requires the most attention. Let me tell you how much attention I give to the three-year-old and I ignore my second grader for some of the time, right? Because he's somewhat self-sufficient, he can do a lot of these things on his own. Is that happening in the multi-age classroom? If you've got three-year-olds, four-year-olds, and kindergartners in there, how often does that kindergartner-
I mean, I will say that we, um, we don't just, I, we look at the data and all of that, but we do have a good relationship with our students and the student support staff really does have a good relationship. And we are constantly discussing students and flagging them. And we, you know, are doing it not only through the MTSS process, but we're just having those general conversations. So, I mean, I think that we have an excellent, you know, ESE support service, you know, program going on at the school. I definitely think that there are things that we need to work on and we're constantly researching and looking up different ways to help our program. But I, I, I agree that there are definitely going to be some students that, you know, we need to, you know, keep an eye on, but I, I just think as a whole, we, we are very strong and we have a good support staff that, you know, we're working towards that.
How many minutes a week are your iReady, are your tier-two and three on iReady?
So, our tier-two, they're working two days a week for twenty minutes, but that's not the only, the only instruction that they're getting. That is on top of working with the teachers in the classroom. That, this is just another layer to provide more support for those students, to close those different gaps.
And tier-three?
And tier-three, they're working with the, um, MTSS coach usually four days a week for about twenty minutes. We basically, we decide how much those minutes are going to be based on the child's age. So, a kindergartner, we would do more five days a week, four days a week for about ten minutes at a time. Sometimes those middle schoolers will come two times a week for forty-five minutes because it's just based on their stamina. How long can they really stay working on those skills? Sometimes, you know, when you're working on math with a, with a middle schooler, you can't get enough done in twenty minutes. You're going to need to have maybe that larger chunks of time, that forty-five minute, you know, block.
Yes, so, so why does your, your proposed schedule only allot thirty minutes for math regardless of the level? Clearly, that's not enough time, right?
Can I address? Um, so, in Montessori education classroom, so let's look at the lower elementary classroom, for example, where you have first, second, and third grade. So, the teachers are giving grade-level instruction to each, so, every child who's in first grade is getting first-grade level instruction directly every day. But then, during times when they're not in direct lessons, they're, the teachers are circulating and, and giving individual help, be it to children who have exceeded expectation or children who are still struggling and not understanding concepts.
And that all happens within the thirty minutes?
So, and that, no, well, the direct instruction would be thirty minutes.
The direct instruction is thirty minutes and then you get some additional time on your own.
Right, right.
I don't know that that matches the schedule that was in our original application, but...
Did you just make up the schedule then?
Pardon me?
Was the schedule just sort of made up?
No. No, I'm sorry, and I'm second string playing today for Patrice, she would be able to give you a much better answer.
In, in what we've done in Ako'i is we have a two-and-a-half-hour work block. There isn't a way to account for that in the SMS system. So, what we have worked with our, our folks at Orange County is like, how would you like to see that, right? And so, that is the type of schedule that we provided for you all. We, they actually get more instruction than what is provided there, but we had to make sure that it, something that, again, being a unique animal, having a two and, there is no checkbox for two-and-a-half-hour work cycle where you do math and science and this. So, so being able to provide that schedule that you had in the application, that was an SMS-type schedule because that was how, what we were-
Do they have an afternoon work block?
Yes.
Yeah. At all grades or?
So, what percentage of your students would you say are in MTSS?
Um, currently, well, tier-two, yeah.
Tier-two or three, I'll be saying it's always a hundred percent, tier-one, but-
Well, right, um, so tier-two, we're looking at probably, our goal, I, I can't say currently right now exactly what we have, but our goal is fifteen percent for tier-two and about five percent, you know, tier-three. But, again, like I said, we're changing our program and we're, I had that new MTSS coach just kind of working at the numbers. The end of last week, at the last week of school, she met with the teachers, kind of made a projection for those tier-two, tier-three kids and how we're going to start, you know, the next school year. Obviously, that, those numbers are going to change because we're going to get, be getting new kids in. We don't know necessarily if kids are going to be coming in who are receiving MTSS already. So, I don't have a set number on that, but that's our ultimate goal.
One of the things that I'd just like to share is, we chose our name Innovation Montessori for a reason. And Montessori has been proven for over a hundred years to be an incredibly effective method of education. Bringing it to the public sector has been something that has been a challenge, that we have, have really done a great job bringing it to the public sector and being able to answer and to service as many children as humanly possible. But the name Innovation, we came to that very deliberately. And in that, is so we would take whatever we have done successfully and always be pushing and improving and always be looking for a better way. That is part of our culture, that is part of our staff, which I think you can hear from the new initiatives that people are bringing. It is not a, we've done Montessori, we've washed our hands, we sit back and say, it'll take care of itself. This is a roll-up-your-sleeves kind of a community, it is a roll-up-your-sleeves staff. And we challenge them every single day to do more and do better and they gratefully and willingly and happily accept that challenge and if you'll see, that's why we have ninety percent of our people returning. Because they love the challenge of being able to do better for our students. Our mission is to take that individual student and provide what is absolutely best for them. So in all of these things, we are more than willing partners on doing better, believe me. That is our mission and that is our goal and we don't have to open another school. We are doing this because we have seen it succeed and we know that the communities around are asking for it. Next year, we have another seven hundred people on our waiting list after we've already drawn our lottery. We have people calling from Lake County saying, do I need to move so I can come to your school? When is it coming here? And they're looking for an alternative method of education and that is what a charter school was designed to do. It is not a traditional school on steroids. It is going to look a little bit different, but we know that we don't just do the black and white. We do the black and white and we will do it even better, but we also educate the whole child. And that is something for long-term learning and success. If you think about it, when you are hands-on and when you are engaged and we, we're learning because you have a purpose, you carry that through your life. And if you look at the success of the graduates of Montessori students, you will see that play out. Amazon, Google, they got this kind of education and that's what we're working to provide. Is it perfect? Nope. Are we working on it every single day, twenty-four-seven, and putting the resources where they count? Which is in the teachers, which is in the training, which is in the students. And that's why we have other programs to be able to raise the funds, to be able to do this really, really well.
So how much technology, how much computers are, are your kids on?
It's one to, they have, everybody has it in...
One-to-one?
Yeah, so it starts light in the primary grades, obviously, and then increases as, as we go up. And when we get to middle school, every student has their own individual device.
And how much are they on it?
Um, as, as needed for their work.
For?
They're not set.
Whatever, whatever project they're working on, whatever research they needed, it's not a set or required amount of time. They use it as needed.
The middle school program, um, moves towards project-based learning very aggressively. So some projects will require more computer time, some will require less.
I ca- can I say, Ms. Dodd, I completely understand your focus on data because data is very, very important. And I know that you can look at those numbers and that's how you, that's your only way to judge us as successful or not successful. But there are other metrics by which we are successful that aren't as easily tabulated. Um, executive functioning skills, something that we're working on very strongly with the children, which is a great measure of how successful a human is going to be on the planet as an adult. Um, and we take tho- you know, we teach giving opportunities for the growth of those skills very seriously at our school. Um, I had, um, the majority of lower elementary kids crying on the last day of school because they were upset that it was the last day of school and that it was summertime. Like, I take that as a measure of success. Um, in middle school, um, we had a student who came to us, um, who had a physical disability, who left his previous middle school because he was, um, being mercilessly bullied and he came to us. And in our Montessori middle school environment, um, the biggest problem that he had was fending off the children who wanted to help and support him and I consider that a measure of success. So there are many measures of success and I completely understand that we're limited to test scores and data and when you're looking at our charter application. But as a school and as a community, I feel we really have a lot to offer, um, everyone in Lake County and it's a, it's a passionate project for us.
Thank you very much.
Um, I had one more question.
Okay, one more.
About boundary.
About what?
Boundaries. Like, in the past, we've, we've had soft boundaries, at least, um, that we've negotiated for charter schools. And that sounds like it would be not at all possible because we're going to be importing a lot of kids from Akoi.
I'm not, I'm not sure, what, what do you mean by soft boundaries?
Attendance boundaries.
Conversions, soft.
Have we done it on...
Um, there's no, no need to import children from Akoi, there's plenty of demand here. Um, and we, in our charter of application, um, there is the, um, rule, right? That if it, if it doesn't fill with Lake County students, that we could pull from other places. And like I said, in Akoi, we had that huge waiting list, right? And we have to fill with Orange County students first and then we can open it up to other students. We just haven't had the ability to do that because the waiting list is too high. We expect to do that here in Lake County, is we fill with Lake County students and then if they're, if for some reason we can't, then we open it up just as the law allows. Does that make sense?
And this will be voted on the next meeting, so if you guys have any further questions, I'm sure you can...
Yeah, absolutely, please contact us and please come out as, for a visit if you would like. We'd be happy to show you the facility if, if you can, I don't know if you can, but that would be fantastic, we'd appreciate that.
We appreciate you guys very much coming today, sharing with us, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Huh, 'cause I believe you're up, aren't you, Mr. Wilson? I lost my agenda two hours ago, so... What, we're taking another break? Okay, we're going to take another three-minute recess.